of our residents that have given a lot of service to Southborough over the years. We want to recognize both of them. The first one is Leo Bartley, who died a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Bartley served in several capacities, including the first town manager at the committee, and then later as chair and member of the zoning board appeals. Second person is Kim Talander, who died last week. She currently is on the K through eight school committee, but has done many other things in her profession, very active with lots of things in Southborough. So we send our condolences to both of your figures.
Can I add?
Ms. Williams.
One thing, just on Kim Talander. Very well known in town, and even though she served on the school committee, she served this town in so many ways that benefited so many citizens of this town behind the scenes that I think it's important that we recognize all that she did as well.
Kathy, if you don't mind, if I can say something?
Okay, Chelsea.
Thank you. So I also wanted to recognize Kim. I had the pleasure of working with her on a few different initiatives over the years, and she was just a wonderful asset to this community and an advocate for all of our kids. And I just want to recognize that she will be sorely missed in this community. I know she was a lot of different things to a lot of different people, and I know a lot of our residents are really upset about this one. So this is a tough one to swallow. She was always in it for the right reasons, and I think that's the number one thing I'll remember her by. So condolences to the school committee, the school administration, and her family. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Second thing I want to mention is, as most of us know, we had a bad set of storms by the afternoon, which resulted in several lightning strikes, including one on Sears Road, that caused a house to catch on fire to its chimney. Fortunately, no one died. The rest was got out, no manholes, et cetera. It was a fire that sparked a whole lot of huge rage, so I wanted to recognize, again, the heroic work of our fire department, and then also thank all of the towns around us that helped us to put the fire out. Just another comment of what we have to watch now, because I'm glad we've got the fire department to do the leadership to do that. Nice job, you.
Yes, thank you. So again, huge thank you to the fire department and the police department. There was a lot of things that happened behind the scenes, as Kathy said, during this process. And not only was there a fire, there was also a fire, a brush fire on Carrot Hill in town. There was also another emergency call that came in on the radio. And while all of this was happening, within 10 minutes of that, we know the windstorm that came through, don't like, want to call them microbursts, I don't know if they have yet, but I think we're looking at the damage. And our town services really stepped up to the plate. They kept our residents safe. They had a lot on their plate, dispatched, did an amazing job with some huge incidents happening all at the same time. So again, major kudos to the police and the fire for stepping up to the plate, and they have our gratitude, and I just think they should be recognized for a pretty crazy night in the town of Southborough, all the residents there. So, thank you.
All right, so just to remind our audience, the select board takes public comment at both the front of the meeting and the end of the meeting. The public comments at the front and the end are for matters that someone wants to bring to our attention that are not on the agenda for that meeting. We will allow you to talk about specific items as occurs. So may anyone want to start off with a public comment? No one there, Vanessa? Okay. First matter tonight is we're going to have a hearing on a transfer of a liquor license. We got... We have Matthew Porter. Mr. Contractor. And the one to... Forth and Dan Koshel for that decision itself.
Good evening. Thank you, Board. My name is Matthew Porter. I'm the attorney on behalf of Promuk Mahan Inc. Along with us tonight is Mr. Contractor, Cronall Contractor, as well as Koshel Patel, the two shareholders of the corporation.
Mr. Porter, let us start the hearings, and then you go over the takeover.
Sorry.
Okay.
Notice is here by giving under chapter 130 of Mass General Laws that Promuk Mahan Incorporated is applied for a transfer of an annual package store alcohol and beverage license, currently held by Mutech Corp., located at 4 Main Street, Southborough, Mass. Described as two floors, 2,225 square feet across three rooms with two entrances and two exits. Proposed manager on record is Koshel J. Patel. A public hearing will be held on the select board acting as local licensing authority in Thomas Southern College, room 2 of the townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass on Tuesday, August 9th at 6:30 PM.
Hearing is officially open, Chris Porter.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Matthew Porter, and the attorney for Promuk Mahan Inc. Along with me tonight is Cronall Contractor and Koshel Patel, the two principals of the corporation. Mr. Patel is also the proposed licensed manager. This relates to a transfer of the section 15 license at 4 Main Street, which is currently doing business as Moro's Market. If approved, it would be doing business as Southborough Liquor and More. It is a fairly straightforward transfer. There's no major anticipated changes to the structure of the building, no changes to the hours whatsoever. This is a very experienced ownership group that's coming in. Mr. Contractor owns a couple of stores already in the state. Both he and Mr. Patel have impeccable records on the operation of their stores. They're both alcohol tip certified, as would all their employees be required to be. They plan on going in. There'll be some cosmetic upgrades, refreshing the inventory, but otherwise, no major changes. There is a pledge of license and inventory to Rockland Trust, who is helping to finance the purchase, so that's before the board as well. But with that, I can certainly answer any questions that the board may have. Mr. Contractor and Mr. Patel can as well.
Andrew, Mr.?
Sure. So, Mr. Porter, I think you already answered one of my first questions, which is whether you can... Whether we can anticipate any differences in the change in the operation of the business? And I think we stand that. Anticipating any?
No, I think you'll certainly see some cosmetic upgrades, bring some life into the store. These guys have some great relationships with vendors across the state, so I think from an inventory perspective, certainly there'll be some improvement there. From a straightforward business model, you won't see any major changes. There's no changes in the hours or anything along those lines.
Oh, can you also speak to the change in the name, going from Moro's Market to Southborough Liquors? What's high on that? Is there going to be any more emphasis on liquor as opposed to Sunrise?
No. No, I don't think so. I think it's just a rebranding of the store themselves, just to allow the new buyers to get a fresh start, just create some separation there. So there's no focus necessarily on one thing or the other. It'll be operating as a liquor store as it has.
I don't know if this is kind of down the road, but does your client have any plans to put in like a new sign in front of the store or anything like that?
Yeah, they'll certainly need to, and obviously subject to approval by the town. But once the, through the process, obviously, as you know, this will go off to the ABCC. They won't be making any upgrades whatsoever until they have ABCC approval. At that point, they put a sign before the town, which would require a town approval. But yeah, eventually, in order to do business as the new name, they'll need to get that sign approved by the town and have that installed.
And so, does Mr. Contractor also own the building?
No, there's a separate ownership group that's coming in, so it is a simultaneous purchase. So the real estate will be being purchased along with the store itself, and there's a lease between those two entities. So there are two groups coming in that have a lease in place, it's just not cross-ownership between the store and the real estate.
Okay, so that as part of the same transaction would be a sale of the real estate and a transfer of liquor.
Yes. Yep, yeah, there'll be simultaneous closings along with that, and then there'll be a lease between the real estate and the store entity.
Okay, that's all the questions that I have.
Thank you. I'll follow up with Mr. Dennington's question. So will there still be prepared food for sale in the facility going forward?
Yeah, I believe that's the case. Cronall or Koshel, can you weigh in on that?
So currently, there is no, like a prepared food available, only just chips, and those are dry fruits, and some groceries available, so we're gonna keep that items, and we're gonna increase some more varieties to that.
So I think one of the things that residents have valued about it is access to a convenience store kind of products there. Do you expect that that will continue and, as you say, expand the inventory or selection of those kinds of products?
Yes, we're gonna be.
That's all I have. Thank you.
My questions have been answered. Andrew asked them, so I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, can you just go back to the ownership of the real estate? It looks like the landlord name is also Contractor, so is that father?
Mother, I believe, yes. Cronall?
Yeah, he's a brother.
Brother, sorry.
And then the easy one. I'm sure we know the answer, but just to be clear, if you go to the information on your bank, Rockland Trust, you've got a question answered, yes and no. The question is, is a lender a licensee pursuant to MGL chapter 138? And you say yes, and the rest of them mean yes?
Yeah, so, yeah, we can wipe that out and get that over to your town. It's just a section on the ABCC forms that doesn't allow us to check out one box without the other one being highlighted. But Rockland Trust obviously does not own any liquor license, but once they get off the hearing, I could just wipe that out and resend that page over to Melanie, just to clear that record on that.
Yes, Chelsea? Chelsea?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, she's all set.
Any further questions from the board? Is there a motion to approve the liquor license transfer?
We're gonna open up the public comments.
So can you have a comment on the transfer of the liquor license?
Yes, my hand up.
That's been up since the beginning.
Right?
Yeah.
Mr. Gray, do you want to come over for this?
My comment was in the beginning. I wasn't sure when the comments were appropriate for the Park Central, if that's going to be opened back up again or not.
Well, the public comment at the first was not for Park Central, because that's on the agenda, so we will be getting that probably around, I think, 8:00, 8:15.
Okay, I was just, I wasn't sure if that was my only opportunity to speak, so that's why I put my hand up.
Another opportunity when we get to the agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public before we go? Licorice license?
Close public hearing. I make a motion to close the public hearing for the beverage, alcohol beverage license currently... Sorry. Thank you. Yeah, I have that. I make a motion that we close the public hearing relative to the license currently held by Mutech Corp., and then... Moro's Market, yeah.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the liquor license transfer hearing?
We'll call this Chelsea.
We'll call vote, Andrew?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Please, aye. Put his aye. Chelsea?
Aye.
Five zero to approve the liquor license transfer.
Madam Chair, if I may, the ABCC requires that the pledge be approved by the board as well, so if I could just ask for a request for the approval of the pledge of license as well, that'd be appreciated.
Is there a motion to approve the pledge of the license as far as the Rockland Trust loan?
So who?
Second. We'll call vote, Andrew?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Please, aye. Chelsea?
Aye.
Put his aye. Five zero to approve the pledge of the license for the Rockland Trust loan.
Excellent. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Hey Debbie, watch your stairs.
I know.
Oh, yeah. Oh, my God.
Jay is watching you.
Next item on the agenda, we've got a consolidated tree hearing with the Southborough Planning Board. So before we actually open the hearing, I thought a little background might be helpful to the public that is listening to this. The solid tree hearing was part of the public, we've got estimated list of trial. Please clarify your needs order. Yes. I call the planning board meeting to order. Okay, so before we open the hearing, I want to make sure that a few things are clear. A consolidated tree hearing is necessary when considering whether to alter or remove public shade trees when the trees are on roads designated as seen roads. Southwood designated all qualifying roads as seen roads in around 1978, the meeting currently in progress. Today, seen roads represent about one half of all town roads. Almost all trees being considered tonight at our joint hearing are on seen roads and therefore require a consolidated hearing between the planning board and the select board. The select board is the tree ward before the town, current special act approved in 1991, that formed the Department of Public Works as reported today. As tree ward, the select board conducts all tree hearings, seen road, and non-seen roads. We have more than 100 trees to consider tonight. All trees except for one are located on seen roads. Ms. Gracio of the select board and Mr. Trail of the planning board have done unanimous work to get this list together. I believe you may say that. They've spent hours and hours and hours. The other four members of the select board are very appreciative of their efforts, and tonight is to determine which public shade trees on the post of this should be removed and are treared. Next, the DPW will take appropriate steps to determine the cost of removing the trees. And then lastly, the special town meeting on October 13th will be asked to approve the funding for removing those trees. We therefore hope to have all public shade trees that are dead and on our list tonight removed relatively shortly. With that, I open a consolidated tree hearing between the Southwood Select Board acting as Southwood Tree Ward and the Southwood Planning Board at 6:51, August 9th, 2022. Mr. Chris Leroy has joined us as microphone in front. Mr. Leroy is the select board designated to assist in and its job as tree ward. Mr. Leroy is also a full-time employee of the DPW. Ms. Gracio, please lead us through the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Purple. Will you read the hearing notes?
Yes, and before I do, I just want to acknowledge also the efforts of Mr. Leroy.
I was going there.
On behalf of the board to help this, it's been a lot, he's done all the posting, and making sure that everything is just normal. So thank you.
And Tammy Race at the DPW office has done the ton of work on lists, pictures, getting everything up on the website, so she should also be mentioned.
Takes many games, so we have to stand as well. Okay, notice. Southwood Tree Ward, under the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 87, Section 3, cutting public shade trees, hearing damages, and the Southborough Planning Board, under the requirements of MGL Chapter 40, Section 15C, seen for destinations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, August 9th, 2022 at 6:45 PM, discuss the removal of 105 trees located on the following streets, Breakneck Hill, Chestnut Hill, Deerfoot, Edgewood, Flag, Gilmore, High, Highland, Glass, Palmer, Lovers Lane, Marlboro, Mount McRee, Oak Hill, Oregon, Parker, Parkerville, Pine Hill, Sears, Southville, Strawberry Hill, Sunrise, Woodbury, and Woodland. It's great to be around. The trees range in size from six inches to 50 inches of the following varieties. There are 10 ash trees, 65 oak trees, six hickory, 14 maple, two pound, one birch, two pines, one linden, one poplar, and three trees of an unknown variety. Each tree is posted in a meeting that you're listening to by the public for a link located at www.southburtown.com/remotemeetings. The applications of the full trees can be viewed online at the following locations, www.southburtown.com/sites/g/files are served. So forth. Any persons wishing to be heard of the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated in objections to the proposed amendments made right prior to or at a hearing.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to Ms. Lachelle, I just want to kind of piggyback on what Marcus said. A lot of time and effort went into trying to work through the backlog of trees. The first group of trees that we'll talk about are from prior Arborist report that was listed on the website, and the second group of trees will be resident called trees. So again, a lot of time. Just thank you for working with Mimi and I as members of the select board and the planning board. I think it was a really collaborative process to get us where we're at here today, and it was very appreciated. So Mimi, do you like to give a little bit of history of how we got here?
I think Ms. Cook took care of that.
Okay, perfect. Vanessa, can you pull up the larger of the two files first? These particular trees that are going to come up on the screen behind you were pulled from Arborist reports that were done over the last few years, and... Hold on, it's up on the screen. Nope, the other one. Sorry. Thank you. So these trees are what's posted on the website. We had gone through, is the trial, myself, and looked through the list of trees. There was some cross-pollination between the two that was adjusted. So the list that was behind us, okay, there it is here. You'll notice there's different colors on the list from what's posted online, just for a little background. There are trees on this list that are designated in red. Those trees are not dead, but death is imminent on these trees. There's an imminent hazard in keeping these trees up. Mimi, is that a fair statement?
I wouldn't say imminent hazard has.
Okay. Then there's green trees, and green is a suitable color. The green are what we deemed and looking at them as still living trees and not something that we felt was appropriate at this time, that we would do an exception to these trees. And Mimi, jump in anytime and add, as you will. And then the blue trees that are on the list, as you go down through them, Vanessa, if you want to pan through these. So can you pan through these, so people at home can see? The blue, they were posting errors of different sorts. Some got blown off in some of the storms that we had, and there were various issues. So what we're asking, what we're asking for tonight is the trees that are listed in black, which were from the original plan, and the red trees are what we're asking to be considered to be taken down. There were some comments that came in from Mr. Farrington. Thank you. And I, again, I'm going to give you kudos for actually taking the time to go and do what we did and walk all of these trees. So thank you for the time and effort that you put into these. I think you're going to find that some, majority of the trees on your list tied in with some of the exceptions that Mimi and I had as well. So you're definitely in good company on these. Specifically on this list, you had referenced 5 Gilmore Road, and 5 Gilmore Road, you'll notice, is green on this list, that we agreed that it was not the time to take it down, it was not dead. 92 Breakneck. Ms. Latrell went and looked at this tree again tonight, and... It's dead. Okay, it's a...
It's a very small little tree, and maybe there's another tree behind it that has leaves hanging over, so maybe it looked like that, part of that tree, but that tree has no...
Am I allowed to speak?
Yeah.
At 92, I believe, there was one that was posted on the setback from the move, that was a little, a small tree, and there was one...
Oh, that was 77.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought that.
I looked at 92 today as well. It's meant to be cleared dead.
Yeah. And, thank you. And then Chestnut Hill was on your list too, and you'll notice three trees on Chestnut Hill that we agreed on those as well. So I hope for this list that takes care of the concerns that you had as well. I'll open it up to, Mimi, if you wanted to open up to planning board for any questions on the trees on this specific list before we go to the next, to see if there's any comments, questions, or concerns.
I just want to make one comment.
Yeah.
So these trees all came as Ms. Gracio said, from certified Arborists did tree out evaluations on different roads, and those evaluations were all posted on the DPW website. And these trees were listed as dead. In the, on the Arborist's report, it defines dead as not living. So we, when we were looking at the trees, if they were living, we called them out as not dead. Some were very close to being dead, but they weren't dead, so we called out those specific things, thinking in my mind, if dead means not living, then what's on here should be not living. So any comments from the planning board? Mr. Mills?
No, just to, maybe you probably already said, and I missed it because I was asking maybe a question. But, so are we saying we're going to handle all these trees on this list, or we're going to leave the ones that we say are not dead and the blue ones, we're going to keep, and we're going to let the red ones and the black ones go?
So the red ones and the black ones are what we're going to ask for a vote from both boards to move forward for removal.
Okay.
And the blue and the green are not. Some of them may come back up in a next quarterly meeting, may or may not, but at this point, it's only the two, the two colors.
If I could just interject, I think that both boards need to agree that the green and the blue should be, should not be removed.
Correct. Okay, yeah.
And is the tree warding now, does it need tree warding onboard of that recommendation as well?
Absolutely. And I think it's important to note that prior to this process of this list, what DPW and our Arborists deemed as dead was not the same as the planning board, but now we're all on the same page about what we're calling dead, you know, what's imminent. So that, this sort of, this process this time around sort of closed that gap, which was really important, because a lot of the things that we were going back and forth on through emails, we were talking about two different things, but we were talking about the same thing. So I think that's important to note.
And so you're onboard as the list was presented in terms of...
Red, drawing, red and a black. Yes, absolutely.
And if I could just make one more comment, Mimi, before you move forward, I just wanted to also recognize we received an exception to a tree at 15 Woodbury that came in late this afternoon. You'll also notice on the list, Mimi and I agreed with that as well, and it was already listed on the screen. So just to acknowledge the exception. Well, I'll take, we'll let Mimi finish with planning board, and we'll move on to our side.
Are you all set, Ms.? This one, yeah?
Thank you. Thanks for all the efforts, for everybody going to do this. Hugely appreciated. So I have some questions, Mr. Mills, thanks for answering that question. And then those trees that were not posted accurately, really, maybe this is a process point versus specifically to these questions, will we try to do this prior to another quarter or three more months?
So I think, Mimi, can I, I'm sorry, your chair of planning, I need to speak over here. I think the intent is, Marty, we're trying to get a warrant article for these, and in order to post and have another hearing, I think it's going to be a tight fit with getting a number together for town meeting. That's what we figured for the next quarter. We just want to move forward on with what we can to kind of take care of a little bit of the backlog. So I think the intent is on the blue to come back at the quarterly, which we're probably actually be probably looking at in November potentially to have hearings, just once the leaves are gone, it's kind of hard to actually go and look.
It is for me with my great Arborists. I can say leaves, no leaves.
My last question is, just driving around, right, we saw the storm that, as we mentioned earlier, took some trees like halfway out, or just limbs, but they're in the public right of way. Are those... Are those, because they were damaged in a storm, are those now part of the, to be discussed? Or are those removed because they were taken down in a storm? Just where do those sit? Do we leave them halfway as trees? I'm just curious. And I can go around and give you a list if that would help, like just the ones that I've identified.
It's individual. I mean, if a tree lost its top, like, uh, at nine Parkerville Road, that tree could stay there for another thirty years. It's only thirty feet tall and has one branch on it. I mean, normally, those trees would be removed.
So, I think if it would be a hazard, Marty, they could be removed now. But I don't think if they're not deemed a hazard, then it would probably be in the next quarter. I hope that helps.
Yes. My last question, thank you, Mrs. Lachelle.
Mr. Murray? I just want to say thank you to everybody for all your help. It's really a kind of a pleasure to sort of get through this and put this all behind us. Um, and I just want to make a, a statement to me that as a community, um, we ought to be thinking about replacement of trees because there's so many on this list, a hundred or so trees. If we could, um, agree that there would be a one for one, inch for inch, replacement of these trees. Um, sometimes if you walk down, um, you know, these roads, there's no room to plant another tree. It's just obvious. Um, but, but, you know, in other cases, we have one, um, set, I know on a couple of roads where we've got five large oak trees in a row that could point down. That might be a good location, for example, for a couple of trees. Um, I think we've been thinking about that as part of the tree, uh, policy. And, um, it doesn't have to be exactly in a spot that tree was taken down, because maybe that's not a great spot. You know, not a problematic anyway, maybe, um, you know, maybe not as strong. But, um, I would like to kind of pressure kids to have, because there's so many trees to see if we could make an attempt to replace inch for inch the trees that are being removed at this hearing.
Inch for inch?
Inch for inch is what the, I believe that's what we, uh, Tree City recommends.
So, if we take out a fifty-inch diameter tree, we put in fifty-one inches or two twenty-five inches or whatever?
Yeah, I get that. That's my point.
They actually recommend two.
Yeah.
To replace two, you know, one tree replaces two, but I'll take one.
So, wait, wait, why do you? So, I think the inch for inch means if you take out a fifty, uh, DBH, fifteen-inch DBH tree.
Yeah.
That you would need to make that up in however many little trees. Now, you can't replace it.
Five-inch trees.
Yeah, yes.
Because you can't buy a fifty-inch tree, and we know that's some fifty-inch tree. So, it would be ten five-inch trees. So, it's part of, it's part of the, like, replanting. One of the things that we learned and also from Christina Zansin, who came to visit us, Arborists, teaching at EMAS, is that, you know, there's a lot of mature trees. This is why we're seeing so many of them die. But we haven't been really good about, you know, planting new ones. Um, and so for the next generation, we want to see those trees because, you know, more trees are going to die. And so, I think it's really important that we start thinking about replanting.
Don't you agree? Mimi, are you with the planning board? All set. Okay, Andrew, I know that you had a couple of times.
I'm sorry, I was.
No, you're totally fine. Go right ahead.
So, the, the list we're going through right now, that's, this is not the resident.
It is not. We're going to do it in two separate votes, just for consistency.
And then on this, the Arborist list, was this generated from the Maya?
Yes, yes. And again, this was done over.
A long time.
Uh, yeah, a period of, Chris, was it three years, maybe? Okay. So, and again, I just want to also point out that this only covered specific streets. We're nowhere near covering the majority of streets in town. I think I, I even asked him, like, one twenty-eight or something like that with these lists. That's probably not, oh, yeah, here. But it, it kind of gives the picture that this is only the start.
Just to make it clear that this is not all of the dead trees in town.
Exactly. That, that was my point, yeah, that, that this is a start. And this was based on, um, specific, you know, reports and trees that had already actually been with that.
So, that's why the list concentrates on certain roads.
Correct.
Okay. And, and these are some streets where there are a lot of, some trees, very big trees, wind up against the side of it.
Yeah. And these are all, I will add, these are all scenic road trees.
Yes, okay. That's all my questions.
Mr. Lachelle?
Thank you. Uh, again, kudos to all involved, major project, long overdue. And as Mr. Heiroy suggests, I think it's very helpful in terms of getting everybody sort of on the same page, ability to language and, and process and so forth. And, uh, it's also, I think, just to reinforce some of the prior comments, it's going to be a long trip here in the sense that we don't have infinite resources to go out and take care of all the trees in the next, you know, sixty days or two, two or three years probably. But I think if we've got a good process in place and continue to work at it and find funds each year and reasonable ways to, uh, dig in the inventory here, I think we can make great progress. I have a comment, Ms. Murray's suggestion about the replacement process. I think that's a great concept. But the challenge, I think, is that you got a limited budget. And so, I think it's going to be actually an interesting conversation to get town meeting to support additional funds at the fall town meetings or the removal work that we have now. I don't, I don't know what it's going to cost to take down a hundred-plus trees. But my opinion is it's not a, a small piece of money. So, again, I think that, for me at least, the first priority is beginning to clear out the obviously dead trees. And as we can, I think it's great to replant and replace. But, um, it seems to me that, long-term, we get to a place where we can do a lot of inch, like inch for inch kind of replacement. But we're so far behind now. I'd rather clear out inventory and more resources for clearing out inventory. And maybe eighty percent of what we have for clearing out and twenty percent for replanting. And maybe that flips in the long run. I don't know. But again, I think it's a great project, and we're off and running here in a very positive direction. So, thanks to all of you. It's hard work to get us here, and we'll keep pushing. Thank you.
So, I just got one question, which is can you clarify what public what Maya is?
Maya was a grant that the town received through Maya being the insurance.
The town's property, that is the insurance.
Okay. It was a, a grant that we had received for three consecutive years that, uh, covered the cost of the Arborists coming up making up these trees on specific works.
Okay, that's my question. Ms. Nannowski?
Thank you. And thank you, Lisa, Mimi, and Chris for working together on this. I think this is wonderful, um, that you could kind of come up with a package for us to review tonight. Um, and, um, so that's great. My questions are related to timing and the amount of funding. So, um, Lisa, you said if we were to do the next set of trees, we're probably, would need to wrap up by November, um, so that we could determine whether it's dead or not? Okay, so then, when, when is the best time to take down trees, or does it not matter because they're dead?
So, for these trees in particular, um, Ms. Latrell had requested that they not come down until the fall. Even if we had done these hearings during the summer, Chelsea, the request for me, and you can speak to that, Mimi, of course. Uh, the request was to not have them come down until the fall. So, would you want to kind of take a second and talk about why the fall was important to it?
Well, fall through winter is the best time to take down and to prune trees. Pruning because, um, it's best to prune trees when they're dormant, which is in the fall, in the winter. And, um, for the dead trees, even dead trees are habitat. And they're, uh, less likely to be serving as habitat during the fall and winter.
So, how many trees are left on an Arborist list that have already been reviewed on other roads?
This is, we are up to date with this list, Chelsea, from Maya and our, and all other trees.
Okay. But what would we, what would we be reviewing in November, that new ones that come up?
Um, you'd potentially be, yeah, you may get some resident requests. Um, certainly, you're going to go back and we're going to look at these blue ones. But if you look at the blue, there's one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah.
You know, five that had posting errors, you know, and any that may come up between now and then from resident requests. So, now you're not looking at another list of a hundred trees.
Okay.
For a minimal number.
So, I just think that when we put the article number together for this list for the bid, that we probably need to give a little bit of cushion for whatever could come up in FY twenty-three so that we can do that before spring hits this year and not have to wait for town meeting next year. We wouldn't have to wait till next fall.
Okay, so when Karen puts her list together, we can incorporate the five blue posted trees in that number?
Would even, I, I would even add.
And then a little cushion on top of that for residents.
Because it may come down. Right, yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay.
That was wrong.
Absolutely.
Uh, just for clarity, so when we talk about taking down trees, I know, uh, I don't think it was the town that's done this. Couple of trees have been left up, but there's a massive trunk, and all the branches are gone and it's twenty feet high. We're talking about taking down the entire tree, um, to within eight inches of the ground.
Chris, you can answer that better.
Some, uh, we call them standing butts. Some that are in town are from town tree work. What happens is when we have a contractor here, we can get three trees made safe if we go to that level. Then we would go back over the winter and have them take the butts down. So, some of the ones that are here are from town tree work. Some are from National Grid. Um, but when, any trees that are in here would be taken to the ground. And if it's on the side of the road where a car could potentially hit it, um, somebody's front lawn, um, a snowplow that does a damage, we grind the stump out and plant lawn or gravel to make it safe.
Thank you for your clarity.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I noticed the gravel. Um, we have one, I think it's the Red Gate on Flag, there are a couple of large trees. Uh, that's actually a spot that's super dry, um, along that road. And I would ask that we don't plant the gravel, because then it means that we can't potentially plant in the future. I had, I had wondered about that because it looked like there was maybe a drop off in the road or something like that. But, um, I think if the idea is that we're trying to replace some of these trees in the future, even if grass is ruined, that's okay with me. But if gravel is there, it means it's not a really a spot that we're going to be planting. And so, I would ask that we, we don't widen the road by, you know, once, once the trees are down. Um, but maybe even what we can agree upon, if it's eighty percent of the trees or sixty percent of the trees, that we start looking at these spots, but if it's gravel, we're not likely to be able to.
Yeah, if I can speak to that, so that specific location on Flag Road, we, we get a resident request that the road was, there was basically a drop in the road. So, we had to stabilize the road on one of the day the call came in. So, we put gravel up there. In the future, I would assume we'll probably go back and either put grass or, but that was just to stabilize the road. So, we didn't lose the road. Because if there's not, nothing there, the road is going to crumble. And then, you know, we start talking about pothole, you know, potholes, et cetera. Um, if it's in a location where there's road, because a lot of these trees unfortunately are in the road, maybe ten percent of it, but when we grind that stump, you only see the stump above ground. The stump goes like, you know, it might go another five feet. So, we're in the road or we're close to the road. So, anywhere along the side of the road, we would put gravel just to make it safe. If it's in someone's lawn or on the side of the road where it's a grassy area, we wouldn't put gravel permanently.
And I think, like you said, a lot of these trees fall within the non-gravel, um.
Yeah, some of these are really tight to the road, which is going to be, they're going to be interesting when they come down if we grind the stumps.
So, we, maybe if we made the agreement that any that don't have to have gravel, uh.
Yeah, I mean.
For future growth or future plantings.
Yeah, I mean, we would like, I mean, we would leave the stump, a lot of them we leave the stump because it's natural. If the resident is okay with that, if it's in a wooded area, we won't spend the resources to grind the stump because it's, it's a pretty big labor and dozen process. A lot of these stumps are, you know, four or five foot diameter. And by the time you get down there, eight feet wide, some of these, these towns, so, um, yeah.
Okay, is that good? Um, is there any comments from the public? Sure.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Again, I said this, you know, thank you for addressing all the issues that you can come. We're all appreciative of that. And it's really good to get these hazards down.
Grant, do you want to come up here?
Oh, sure.
Do you mind? I, I'm not sure if the, I was picking you up.
Sure. Uh, yeah, so I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, can you just do your name and address?
Yep, Grant Farrington, fifty-eight Flag Road.
Thank you.
Um, so I have a couple of questions about, um, the, the list here, especially on Flag Road. I noticed that under the address, um, columns, that the addresses for the location of the trees on Flag Road weren't listed for, uh, most of them, I think of all of them except two. Um, so it's just a bit confusing to me, especially for the Flag Road trees, which ones right now are the green ones and which ones are slated to be removed.
So.
Because the, the street address isn't listed for, I see twenty-two Flag, number twenty-seven, but then for twenty-eight through thirty-five, there's not a street address listed, so I was just curious.
So, I think that came from the Arborist report that we, Mimi, when we walked it, do you?
So, um, this, this came from the Arborist report, which, uh, Mr. Murray was nice enough to.
Yeah, to an extent, yeah.
And then, um, the DPW put it in alphabetical order. And the line numbers are the numbers that are posted on the tree. So, that's how I was able to cross-reference what was here to the, um, the Excel spreadsheet.
Okay.
We have.
So, is number twenty-seven and twenty-eight, are those the two large trees near Red Gate? Is that what those, is that what those two are? Just want to make sure that. Tag numbers are active too.
Well, those posted twenty-two Flag or opposite twenty-two Flag.
Okay, I remember that number twenty-seven. So, I've supposed to have the second, second two there, so.
Yeah, if you look at the GPS coordinates, they're basically right on top of each other.
Oh, okay.
So, that's, so those are the two that are right next to each other.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing, I did have a concern about was when I looked at the posting on the website, um, for the one at Flag, uh, by Flag Road.
Yeah.
Which is a butt, uh, or, you know, top tree. Um, the pictures shown show two pictures of the actual butt of the tree. But then there are two pictures of a live tree next to the, um, butt. Um, so I was just wanting to make sure that even though only one of the trees is posted, that, that, the live tree next to it, since there are pictures taken of it, wouldn't be.
Only the tree that's posted.
Okay.
And I was, I took the pictures. So, that was me taking a picture down the street. There is the tree you can see in front of it, because it's the posted tree.
Great, thank you. Um, so, yeah, I, I did have a hard question about, um, on Sears Road. Um, it was a bit hard for me to find the address, but I believe it was, um, it was in between the two driveways of, uh, City Hut.
Yeah, that's actually on the list. It's number fifty-seven.
Oh, okay.
I think you had the address as sixty-four. We, we had it as fifty-eight.
Okay.
So, that, that is the tree, and that is a live tree. We reviewed that. It was, it was already on the list as green.
Okay, great. And then my last, um.
Did I misspeak, Mimi?
It's almost supposed to be black.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I may not, right, Mimi, so I corrected it on this, sorry. Mimi and I, um, we went over, we got a bunch of comments today. We went over it, and I realized that I did make it green. So, I corrected it and had Vanessa put the correct posting. Uh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, great, yeah.
That was, that was me, sorry.
No, that's fine. I saw it as black on here, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's actually green now.
Um, the other one, uh, that I was wondering about was, um, I believe the address was fifty-two Edgewood. There are two trees on either side of the driveway. Is that on this list or is that?
It's on the resident list. It's on the next one.
Okay.
And we can certainly speak to those.
Excellent. Um, and the last one, sorry.
No. Yes, we're here for it.
Um, uh, seventy-two Flag, I, I sent an email later this evening about that one.
I didn't see that one.
Um, I, yeah, sorry, I missed that on my original list. Um, it's, so if you're on Flag Road, there's like the five large dead trees all in a row. It's further off to the left. If you're looking at the five trees, it's down the road a bit. And, um, it's about like half-dead, half-live. I wasn't sure if it was considered an imminent death one, but there are, there are still views on it. So, I was just curious about that.
Mimi, do you have a note on that one?
I think I have a picture here that I can pull up as well.
I think we had that one as dead.
Is that number thirty-six on the spreadsheet?
Yes.
Yeah, I can show that it's dead.
I have a picture here of trees on, but, um, from like, uh, July twenty. But it is, you know, it's not in great condition, but, um, I don't believe it's actually dead. It's really, I have a opinion about that.
Um, the trees that I looked at and tagged on Flag Road, I, I feel are all need to. Need to come down.
Your data are structurally compromised.
Yeah, we've, we've had pieces of that tree come on, come down. We've had callouts and, you know, during storms, middle of the night, the last few years, I mean, that tree is coming apart. Um, it is alive because it has leaves, but it's, I mean, it made this list because it's not in very good condition. And it's on, you know, the Flag Road is a well-traveled road and it, it seems like it needs to come down.
The Arborist group, the Arborist was the one that said that it was dead and we went out and we concur with that.
And if we're doing work in that area, especially on Flag Road in that section, we're gonna have to close the road detour. Cause those trees are so large, there's gonna be a crane. So while the crane is set up, then we have the detour, we have the police. That tree needs to come down. For us to do it at that time, it makes sense physically for us.
Okay.
Sounds agree.
Thank you, we'll see that when we, that's the list.
Chelsea's question, which is a good. It, it's unclear to me exactly how we plan to move forward with this, assuming hypothetically that we vote to. Remove hundred trees plus or minus.
Money wise?
Money wise. And that's.
Okay, so there's eighty-five thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-three, but for tree stuffs, right? Arborist treatment, whatever. So the plan is to go to special town meeting, let enough money to fund this big. Right, so Karen's gonna come up with a proposal, we're going to put that number in there. And based on what Chelsea said, which is a very good point, we probably need to pick up enough to fund everything that we're gonna do this round, including the next hearing. Again, try to resolve the fall and then how far up that, that extends. We need to get the money at special town meeting because that eighty-five K is not going to do this, right? And then the next by the apple will be fiscal year twenty-four budget, um, where we'll have a better chance to really think about this as far as what we want in the normal recurring medical.
Right. Just some expectations, um, I, I'm interested in understanding sort of the macro level. Funding looks like here in the sense that it costs us a thousand bucks to take out a tree that some of these made. You know, that's a hundred thousand dollars. If we have to go to a special town meeting for an extra, you know, twenty-three thousand dollars or something like that. I guess that's probably a pretty reasonable expectation. If it comes back, then it's gonna cost us an additional hundred thousand dollars. I think that's a pretty heavy lift for a special town meeting. So not that we shouldn't try to do as much as we reasonably can. But do we need to think about phasing this over, you know, more than the next, uh, six months, twelve months here? And I, again, actually we don't have a precise estimate of this. It's really, if you had any rough ideas.
Thousand dollars, trees not.
No, it's tough. A lot of these trees are craned, they won't even touch them without a crane, which is five thousand dollars a day. And the thing is, what we did is we focused on clumps on roads. So that, like, some of these trees, it's one setup, they could do four trees. So we might get those four trees done in one day for five thousand dollars, but if we did it three different times, it's gonna cost us twelve thousand dollars.
And I also worry too, Sam, that we got a hearing on these trees now, but we agree they come down. And then we get one of these crazy storms or something that comes through and a car gets hit by one of these trees. We have a liability because we've agreed they should come down and we put off, so that was my concern.
So I'm not crazy about adding money, um, as a special. I don't think that's what a special is for, except. I, I would support, except for this one thing, right? Um, because we worry to the town where our budget is, we said this is your tax grant, so we can't throw a lot of money at special because it's not fair. But this is, we don't do this. We're just gonna get so, we're going to, alright, so I'm all for making a big effort to, you know, start this process with a big chunk. And then from that point on, making sure we consider what we want to do in the annual budget process.
I'm in favor of that also. I'm just worried that the number is too big and jeopardizes of town meeting both. I think we gotta balance it. And maybe as we get a better idea of specific costs, uh, it turns out, for example, that there's, you know, something that's really expensive that we might be able to. Balance the pros and cons there.
Yeah, and, and normally, uh, I mean, the number that Karen puts into the budget handles our resident requests on a yearly basis. This is, was sort of like one big project to get a lot of these busy roads with big trees. That we've been looking at for a long time. Just, let's just get them down, get them under control, and then we sort of work the list. And we come up with resident lists, lists from the arborist, kind of peck away as those lists come in. But these roads that are really well, high-traveled roads, we can, we can get them under control.
Favor that. I just intend to balance what we think you did.
It's not all enough, neither. If you get this, a too big a number, then you'd be amended and cut down to the after.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I just ask Mr. Barrington a question?
Of course you may.
So I have seventy-three Flag and it's not dead, but seventy-two is dead. Could that be seventy-three? Do you have a posting number on it?
I do, I can give you one second.
Yeah.
It, it should be, do you have a picture of the posting? It should be on there.
Posted itself.
Yeah, it should be on there.
Here's a picture of the tree that I'm just. Right past it, it's alive.
Oh, it might have been a weight bearing issue. I don't know, I'm just guessing.
We, we have the resident in the background.
Oh, yeah, so it's thirty-five. I have that as seventy-three Flag.
I know thirty-five is, um, much further down.
No, 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 thirty-five is the, um, is the tag.
Oh, okay.
So we're in agreement on that.
Oh, great, thank you.
Okay, that being said, um.
Yeah, one more question.
You met.
We're talking about the cost and everything. I mean, some of these ash trees, those, they assume there's some value, right? Cause it's like, what happens? You just get turned into firewood and taken away and thanks for taking them? Or?
Mr. Lee Wright can answer that question.
Currently, the part of the cost of taking the tree down is that the wood is removed. So they take into account what they're gonna do with the wood, whether they sell it for firewood. So that's figured into the price that we get. We don't keep the wood when they take these trees down.
More expensive if you did.
Yeah, we have, we, we keep wood of trees that we take down or come down in the storm and then we have to get rid of it. Once or twice a year, we have to have a company come in and grind it all. Uh, but it has, there's no value to it that we get. It just comes off the price of the tree removal.
So, um, that being said, without further exceptions, I think we would rest them. Oh, I'm sorry, Andrew. Hi, come on up, if you come up to the table and just give us your name and your address. Sorry, I didn't see you there.
More rounds, refill my drink. Um, just a clarification, if the special town meeting, if no additional funds are approved, there's eighty-five thousand dollars. So you can at least have some to start.
Yes, without adding extra funds, yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. So I, I think the easiest way to move forward is, is that both boards make a motion to support the removal of the trees. Listed in black and listed in red, uh, with the exception of, we'll add fifty-seven in because it wasn't on the list that you guys had. To make sure that fifty-seven, um, is included as well.
So this would be, this is the, the ones that are still in black, it's a total consensus.
Red, black and red.
Mr. Barrington's.
Yeah, yeah, because we were, we were in agreement on the trees that he had an exception to.
And, and the woman who submitted.
Correct, same thing. She's a, she's a green tree on the list as well, so.
So fifty-seven was a green tree, just.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, on this list, it's green, okay? So I just wanted to make, make the note that the list that I did send to you guys didn't have fifty-seven listed as being safe. Okay, so going by this list, which is the only change is to fifty-seven. That, uh, we would, I would ask the Board of Selectmen to support, um, the removal of the trees listed in black. And the trees listed in red, uh, for removal and the trees listed in green and blue. To be exceptions to this hearing.
That's a motion.
That's a motion, do you mind?
This, this, well, I think, okay, we've got a motion in a second. Okay, um, no, I don't have any comments.
Okay, Mr. Trapp.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Okay, so we all have, well, we have to do it well, well, on the board of selection. Yes, yeah, sorry, um, Chelsea?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Do your.
Latrell, yes.
And yes. And yes.
All right.
And, and are we going to, um, make any statement as far as replanting, the intention to try to replant if not?
I think that is, the, the, the goal would be, yes, but I think it's, Sam mentioned, we need to look at the funding issue as well. I think for this town meeting, getting them removed and then if you want to put a policy or something together, my suggestion. For the annual town meeting, that would be an annual, um, maintenance that would incorporate the replacement. Cost of trees.
So we can make a statement that we did only place trees.
Yes, we definitely don't do it, but we've got to plant it too, so we've got, we've got to go hand in hand. And they couldn't be planted until, well, the spring anyway. So it's, it's, I think for an ask of that could be incorporated into a maintenance going.
Since, no, this list just concentrates on like, less than a dozen streets.
Correct.
So, I mean, I think it's very case by case, so, you know, so a lot of these roads are more on the south side of town. You and I, for my, some of those roads are, I don't even know where you would go. It would be difficult to even find the place to plant a tree because it's so heavily forested already.
And that's outside.
Um, woodland, break that count, some of them, uh, woods.
I don't think we should get into that.
We certainly can create a policy.
But we can always plant a tree someplace else too.
Oh, okay.
Plenty of opportunities, so, um, I, I think the commitment is there, I mean, that, um. I, I think the board is supportive of looking at this and coming up with something that would, would be a replacement policy for plant trees.
Can I start the tolling with these trees though? Because it, it could be, I mean, I think there's only like really about ten a year or something like that, like. If you look back, I know Chris and Becky listed the document together, resident requests over the past, like, ten, twenty trees a year. I mean, we're a huge backlog right now, but I would ask that we start with these hundred trees and say. We're committed to replace the, and of course, they don't have to be in the. Just basically saying, we want to start looking at the species that we're planting. They may not be great, they are getting diseases, it may not be an allocation, that location might not be great. But I am afraid that if we draw the line in the sand for like annual town meetings, then we're looking at replacing, you know, ten trees a year. When we're, we've taken down a hundred and fifty this year. So I would like to start the tolling now with these.
What do you mean toll?
Add up how many inches do we, are we taking down? And say, okay, we're gonna connect to the, that, it's not gonna be right away. We don't have a, has to get funding. But that if there's, you know, uh, a thousand inches of tree, then that's what kind of goes into our theoretical, uh, bank of trees that we would like to replace.
So my question is, so if we're going to town meeting to ask for the funds to remove all these trees. There's still that tree export line item for eighty-five thousand, so we're not gonna use that for removing trees, can't we?
Yeah, that's the intent, is to ask town meeting for.
Oh, the difference?
Yeah, oh.
But also it's got, that's got to fund the arborist. There's certain things that go for the eighty-five. As we speak, so, um, I think it's gonna be used pretty fast.
So I, I, I would be comfortable making a commitment to continue these discussions on coming up with a policy that both planning board. And the select board, and I, I think we have a start. I think we're, we're in agreement that we need to do something. That, you know, it's our obligation to, to someone of the customer.
There's a task for the planning board.
Hey, there you go, Mr. Statters.
I mean, one, one thing was precious, I mean, there are times when the planning board has a project to put in. They get fed all the trees on the site that we have asked in the past.
Yeah.
We donate X number of trees in town. So I think that aligns with what you're saying in terms of, yeah, let's start keeping the list. And if we just know, hey, it's only five straight leaders, you know, click ash. Whatever, say, pick any of these, we'd like five of those that are six inch tall, that's given to town.
Yeah.
And the town knows if they're gonna, you know, be, be ready to accept them and plant them.
You know, maybe we continue this process. I mean, this has been successful with having a planning board member and a select board member, I think. Try to model through this. So maybe we continue that back on, on tasking, not necessarily tonight, but tasking someone from both boards to work together to come up with. A, a plan and a policy. That's just a suggestion. All right, can we bring up the next list? I think this one is going to be easier and quicker. I do. These are the resident lists, so, um. Mimi and I had also walked these and then there were specific trees we had requested we walk at the arborist as well. We had questions and concerns. So, Mr. Barrington, if you want to come back up, I can certainly address some of the trees. Me, um, Ms. Latrell and I can address some of the trees in particular that you had on your list.
Mr. Mike, would you mind telling me what the red?
So the red is just, um, trees that we deemed death imminent, that there was a hazard. And we, we're gonna go through some of those with you on the ones you had exceptions to, okay? Um, for instance, um, let's see, can't do that one. Fifty, fifty, you mentioned Edgewood.
Yes, or two trees, but fifty-two.
And fifty-one. So Mimi, do you wanna start on those two and we'll, we'll jump around, um. Uh, what, we actually want these ones specifically with the arborist. Not the Maya Arborist, but an arborist in town. So, or I can jump in, maybe either one, either way.
Let me get my, um, South Grove tree rest.
Yes, I showed that too.
Yeah, and so those two trees, um, are alive. However, they're in very bad shape. Um, the one on the. I think on the right of the driveway has, um. Extensive termite, termite damage. It has fungus growth all the way up the tree, which is not a very good sign for the tree. And one on the other side has extensive, uh, rot at the, most of the base is all rotted out, so that makes it, uh, very unstable. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Chris.
I know, that sums it up.
Yeah. So we thought those, those were definitely.
Unstable enough.
Unstable, yeah. Huge, big, gorgeous, folks, heartbreaking, that they, you know.
Well, hey, they're right over the road there.
And why don't you continue on to eighty-one Oak Hill, cause that was tough.
Oh, that was another one that broke my heart, yeah.
That one's breaking my heart as well.
It's, it's a tough one, believe me. We, uh, we tried really hard on that. Oh, Vanessa, oh, they're working on it, okay. Okay. I'm, I'm actually just going through the ones we had exceptions to, and then we'll open it up to the board for questions on any other ones.
Yeah, um, that one had, um. Significant stem decay, many. Freiers, cankers, and, and I think Chris had been working on that for years trying to trim it.
Did we have trimming yet?
It's just a big, beautiful old tree that has reached the end of its life stuff, life cycle, it's happened.
Although it is still alive.
It is still alive. It's on a, on a busy road, um, and Chris has worked on it for many years, trimming things back to try and keep it going.
I think the branches.
Do you have pieces to wash them?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Nine Lovers Lane.
This is one before you go.
Sure.
This is one that I was a bit confused about, because the posting itself, even on the, on your list here, so there's three oak trees, but there's actually only one.
Posted, correct.
Tree. So I'm, I'm curious, is it one of the, like, what happened with, because there's, there's a split tree and then. My understanding is that there's one nearby as well, so is it only one half of the split tree being removed?
So the original resident request was, he had three huge oak trees that he wanted down.
Okay.
So we went and looked at them, two of them need to be trimmed, we decided. They were structurally fine, they just leaned back towards his house, so we could take the weight off of him over his house. And one of them needed to be removed. And that was, when you split the double tree, it's the whole tree. We're not gonna split the tree.
Okay.
It leaked out, because of the half, we would leave, we'd be over the road and then we would be back there.
And that's why only one was posted, so the other two will come back for planning board for trimming, yeah. Um, the other one was thirty-two Flag.
Yeah, this is one that I know, um. Uh, as I talked about, is potentially unstable, um, but, uh, I. But I did, what did Arborist, what did, what did Chris do?
Yeah, and we talked to the, the property owner there a couple of times.
He's already lost a big section of the tree.
Yeah.
So his concern was that the rest of it is going to end up in his yard again. And he might not get so lucky with falling in the side yard. So.
It's severe base rot.
Yeah.
Cankers.
Cankers. Thirty five breakneck kettle was one also. Walked this one with the arborist as well. And you know, you're doing good. Just if you want to keep going from your list.
So that one looks much better from the street. When you get around to the back, it's just all completely rotted out.
Okay.
And decay.
And that leaves ten lettuce lawn. So when we, we walked this one a couple of times, this was a tough one. This is a really, really tough one. And we did speak to the homeowner while we were there as well. He had offered for, to get another arborist to come out and look at it. When we had walked it, I believe there was weight bearing issues on the tree. If you take off the whole side that's dead, all the weight is centered on, Chris, I guess you can speak to this better than me.
Yeah, so what, what originally happened was this is a new resident now. The people who lived here up until three months ago called about this tree every two months for two years. And it was, it wasn't in the conditions in now. It slowly progressed where the ground has, everything over the road is basically dead. So to trim that and remove that and leaves all the weight, which is, you saw the tree, it's gigantic, over the house, which in the, the base has rotten, there's issues with the base. You can't, our, our arborist felt that he can't leave that much weight being on the house side, it being a town tree. It's a significant liability to leave it like that.
And we were hoping that she would have the arborist come out and they may have had something that could have given us pause and then Mimi, do you want to add anything on this one other than?
Well, I know that this one, another yeah. A few months ago, it was this patch. It's really declined really fast and a great majority of the ground is dead.
Yeah, and the bases. Something happening.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to discuss that one.
So I think that covered all of the exceptions that you had on your list.
I did have two more, I think. Let me just check. So E Clemens, I visited yesterday and I didn't see a post anywhere.
That's a trim.
So that's why it was.
That was a trim.
Yeah.
Is it that super large? Okay.
Originally, they wanted it removed and we suggested that it just.
And it's not on the final list.
Oh, okay. I was looking at the one with the package. So, okay, that's, that's great. And then so seventy seven breakneck hill, which I apologize, I'd gotten the address wrong previously. So there are two dead trees there that are posted. One of which is kind of set back from the road. We had like I don't know, 10 feet or something. It's kind of like a double, small double tree that's, there's one closer to the road, which is also posted, which looks to be alive. So I was just curious about that one.
So that one has also significant insect damage. In fact, I pulled something, something out of there. It was kind of gross, Lisa, out. Yeah, it has fungus growth, stem decay.
I couldn't talk about that. I think that's it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just for, for planning board application and as well just walking around me and us, the ones that are in red weren't necessarily dead, but in walking with the arborist and, and talking about these, it was enough of a hazard that all of them, based on something on the G R A, and we certainly can speak to any, if anyone has any questions on any of these, Mimi and I, we have room to speak to them. So if you want to open it up to planning board, Mr. Wilson?
So I'm just going through the packet. There, there's none that are red on the packet. Which is fine. Are there any that are green or blue?
Only one blue. It's one eighty four Woodland.
Okay.
Which is at, at the bottom. There was a posting on that one, posting issue on that. So we're recommending the one thirty trees that are in the packet to minus one. So twenty nine trees we removed.
That's all. Okay. So this of the retired arizona.
Yeah.
Okay. And both lists, right? Cause there was a supplemental one.
The, the addendum and it's, it's, yeah, it's incorporated into the end.
Do these draw, and we had the discussion did, did these draw objections?
We just went over to Mr. Farrington.
Your, your comments incorporated this, the resident.
Yes, I didn't separate them, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and please come up, absolutely.
Laura Reynolds again for number fifteen. Sure. The only thing I have on that is National Grid, two years before this was on here, had sent us a note saying it needed to come down. And my concern is that where it is, the limbs, there's wires that go across Southville Road. And already twice, there's been times when there's been a police officer, because there were limbs in the road. And it's also where our house is. It, there's our wires that go from the road to our house. So the tree is like right in the middle and could hit either set of wires. So I didn't know if we could.
Bring something to that one.
So when this came out, we were going to work in conjunction with National Grid.
Yeah.
Get it done quicker.
Yeah.
Because they don't have the availability of the equipment that the town has, lawyers, trucks to move that big wood.
Yeah.
So when this gets approved, this is one that we would be able to, I mean, this isn't going to cost the, the town basically just where our, our, our labor hours when we're here. This isn't going to be a counteragent. That's National Grid has already said off the, I mean, not in writing, but that we're going to do it hand in hand.
Yeah.
Going to be quick.
So could we put, move that higher up? As, as he said, it's, it's not going to be intrigued. It's going to come. That's going to be what we're going to ask town meeting to fund. It's going to be taken care of.
So your concern is the timing?
Yeah.
Well, my concern is that every, there's limbs that are always falling and there's two sets of wires where
So it's starting to get worse, Chris.
Yeah, yes, yes.
We have to get approval. So as we get approval, we can, I can talk to people at National Grid.
We're not, but he's going to move this one along is what I'm saying.
National Grid was basically to provide the muscle to get it down. We just have to provide the trucks, equipment to get the wood out of the way so we can get them pretty quick.
That one is kind of scary where how the wires are.
Yeah, because it's going across the road and then it's going up to our house. So.
Just to be clear, you're not objecting to take it down. You just want to take it down safely.
Yeah, I think it's dead too.
It is dead. It is dead.
Yeah, yeah. So it's kind of a we're in the middle of a purple storm there.
So would you like us to say, do you as far as this one tree, as far as the timing?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be great. Absolutely great.
Are you finished, Mr. Wilson?
I know we was going to go back to planning board, sorry.
You can just write it down.
Mr. Wilson? I just want to point out, I noticed the big difference between the arborist list and the resident list. And sometimes the residents are calling out, there's a giant dead limb that just needs to be cut and not take the whole tree. So it's very helpful, some of the notes that you provided, Chris Mimi and others, it's very helpful to know, we're talking about trimming or we're talking about cutting. And I much prefer trimming and that we get into the habit of, you know, actually the residents are the first ones on the front lines. They're looking out their windows. But I want to make sure that in the future that arborist is going to be looking at all resident requests. So we're not clear on that? Is that part of our process?
Well, well, this process.
Yes.
Lisa and I went on a field trip and looked at all the rest of the trees. Anything that wasn't dead.
Dead.
Or imminent death. Um, we had the arborist.
We did, we supplied a list.
Okay, so that'll be the, that's the process we would, we would use.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause a lot of time, people say the tree's dead, but we truly want to help them grow.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think to be fair, I mean, my experience has been that I think Chris and others have been again, very focused on trimming, where you can safely trim. I, I, I don't get any sense that
I mean, cut it down is the first option. Yeah, like you said, that eighty thousand doesn't go very far. If we start cutting down trees, it's going to go down. And the problem is, is the trees that we've been taking down have been huge, large, large trees. So we're not going to be able to take down as many with that eighty five thousand. So we're always up for trimming, trust me.
Yeah, I've observed that. I think that's the right way to go. And I think most people prefer that.
Not to relate to this, but I just want to make sure that what Debbie asked is what we answered. What she asked is that going forward, if you get a call from resident, there's going to be an arborist involved every time. And that's not what this.
No, because if it's dead, it's kind of a waste of money to spend the arborist out to a tree that clearly is dead.
I just want to make sure I understand the process. I actually don't think that's the process that are a little schmaddled. I don't believe that probably is.
So
right? The green, kind of like seen it trees and I just want to know, like, I just want to know the process. So I, and I'm not clear. That's why I asked. I thought on the policy that exists, we do, to kind of like, I think the one that Vanessa threw across. There's sort of the seen road and then there's the non-seen road. I thought an arborist was involved in each of those.
Yeah.
Am I wrong?
No.
That an arborist is involved in each of those. So I want to make sure we're following a prior.
So I should agree with me. Public hearing, select board. Two wardens slash arborist looks at the tree, determines history, whether or not it's a root tree. For the joint hearings, arborist will review trees. So yes, it says before the hearing, yes, according to this, what we found in doing it is it would have been only nine trees out of the thirty. Is that fair to me? Nine out of the thirty we asked the arborist to look at, because the others were clearly dead. Right, to pay. So maybe your question is we adjust this a little bit until we get the policy, hopefully that we've worked our conclusion, adjust the policy for that to be
Yeah, I'm happy with how we also.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, this was a learning experience.
It was. So we could tweak, you know, the little stages of the policy and get something.
And you were saying this, which was.
It was. Planning board meetings.
Every year, yes.
I'm talking about this, this board. Go ahead, can you say that?
Yeah, one question. On Lovers Lane, where there's a couple prominent, like top trees, there's like a cluster of three of them. What ends are left there?
Yes.
Do you know those made it onto any of these lists that were?
No, because we were, we weren't sure if a standing tree but needed to be heard or if that's work we can just do. Because when they're left like that, we can go back and just take them down. We haven't because we didn't know if we could or not through this process. So that's something that we have the clarification on.
And we used Andrew, a resident called about it, it would have been on.
Sure. So I guess just on the, you know, couple different handfuls of trees that, that does seem to be one where the street would look better. They don't look good right now.
Yeah.
Seems to agree on that. Let's get that done.
Yeah, that work kind of got halted.
Still requires planning board.
It's, it's not accepted from that. Unless they were, unless they were chopped after a hearing, maybe just any, anything that was a second. But those are, those are not accepted.
So they need to require anything.
All right, well, just hopefully in the next
Next round.
Your next.
Are you telling Chris or President?
I was thinking about it. It was strange. The opposite end of the town where I live, but.
Is that it, Andrew?
Okay.
Sam? Chelsea?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, so that being said, and with no further objections, do we have a motion to remove all of the trees on the resident list minus one eighty four Woodland Road, which I have posted issue.
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anyone want to start your motion and then the program table?
So moves Mary Wood. Ms. Rush, you have it.
I did it. Okay. Uh, what's your call? Ms. Delanowski?
Hi.
Ms. Rush, hi.
Sorry, Chris, hi.
Mr. Dennyton.
Hi.
Latrell, yes.
Those yes.
And yes.
All right. That was a big challenge. Thank you to everybody. Okay.
Yeah.
I think I'm going to just touch on.
I wish. Too big for my cheek.
Lisa, do you have to close the hearing?
Um, yes, yes. Thank you, Chelsea. Um, also, before Dad, before you leave. Before you leave, we need to close the public hearing on the trees. So do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, Mr.?
Hi.
Ms. Delanowski?
Hi.
Mr. Stagers?
Hi.
Mr. Dennyton?
Hi.
Hi, Rush, you have it.
Latrell, yes.
Those yes.
Lathan, yes. DeMar, yes. Do I have a motion for the planning board to?
Sure.
So moved.
Second. Latrell, yes. More before we jump up, we're about to briefly talk about the proposed tree policy.
Just giving an update that the.
Should we on adjourn? Well, that's honestly, you can adjourn and listen, or you could wait and adjourn.
It, it's a two second conversation. Okay, so what we're, we're asking, I know planning board is going to be talking about the policy, the draft policy at your next meeting. I'm requesting that the board of selection put your comments together. Could you have some? Mr. Purple and planning boards will send your comments as well. We'll incorporate the one document and then we'll go on to that. But easy.
We're easy.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, select board. Thank you, Mimi, again. Thank you for everything, Chris. Thank you for everything.
All right, I'm done.
So this is going to be a test of our meeting before these, right? Okay, so hopefully it's the last hundred trees here.
Yeah.
And next I honor this to next on our list is to discuss a recently completed traffic study that was done by the H B. We're going to invite a H B representative, Mr. Greg Russell, to come to the table. So by way of a background, we're concerned over time. May recall that our first COVID outdoor meeting, we had a citizen petition. Flagrove had asked the select board to put a truck exclusion on Flagrove. The one article was not applying because it can't be the request. Select board instead of deciding to do that on its own, in fact, had decided that the better course was to basically study truck, truck load in the hotels and make a good holistic decision as far as where we should put truck exclusions. So go forward to the special town meeting last month at reverse and it was more article to fund a heavy truck study for twenty five thousand dollars. It passed. The contract was signed with H B in December two thousand twenty one for fifteen thousand dollars to fund the study. And here we are tonight. Study's been complete. It's been disclosed. Hopefully the base had a chance to read it. And we've got Mr. Greg Russell here tonight to visit and walks through the results and so.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. So as we said, I'm Greg Russell, I'm a senior project manager of the H B. And we took a, tried to take a kind of a holistic approach to taking a look at truck traffic within town and coming in, exiting town and how to best review that and see what changes we could make, what changes we can improve, implement. So that's how, how we got here. So then, as you said, that we started in signed our contract in December. Through the winter months, we got traffic council in March, end of March. Move forward. So and basically we were just trying to review the existing heavy vehicle traffic that was entering in and out of town, entering, exiting the town. And identify what the existing truck routes are through the town. What referred by the operators and then again, identify those potential changes. And heavy vehicle exclusions, you know, they're used by every town. They're, they're to try and direct traffic where they want. And then you get to a point where you kind of hit a saturation point with them and they don't work the way they're supposed to. And so that was kind of the focus for this. Um, and so that was kind of the purpose for this, um, session, that's all. Um, all right, so, methodology, we did, took a look, took a traffic count throughout the town, uh, twelve locations, we employed automated traffic reporters to. Collect traffic over forty-eight continuous hours. Uh, we looked at twelve points around town, and we tried to kind of focus those at the entry points to the town. Um, and then we kind of supplemented that with available data, and so. The, so those traffic records are kind of located on, say, the Marlboro City Line, on Marlboro Road and eighty-five, South Road, at Ashland and Westboro. Um, Northboro Road and Marlboro, so, stuff like that. Then we got E. G. Our Training Room Council, nine locations to kind of. Um, demonstrate, or get an idea of what direction trucks were taking, you know, when they hit a particular intersection, so. South Road Road and eighty-five, um, Johnson Road and Main Street, just to kind of get that idea of where they were headed. And that was kind of how we identified what the routes were, and kind of those preferred truck routes, and where we may want to implement other exclusions. Um, then we also. Took traffic counts from Massachusetts T's website to kind of back up that, um, get ideas from Route nine. Some Training Room Council were taken both by Massachusetts T, the Boston MPO, as well as some of the. Areas. Um, some studies from surrounding towns that they have overlapped, um, and just driving around, just to get an idea of some. So, uh, just a background, um, existing roadway network, um, just. Consistent with most, with every town. Um, town roadway networks, system of arterial roadways, collector roadways, local roadways, all at various purpose. You know, arterials, you know, Route nine, Route eighty-five, they're, you know, providing connections between communities, between major driver generators. Collectors, kind of getting the residents through those arterial roadways, or to, you know, some smaller destinations. Then local roadways are your standard subdivision roadways, cul-de-sacs, and. Like, one of the issues with Massachusetts, New England in general, any of these, you know, old towns is, you have a lot of roadways, they're small. Look like they're just local residential roadways, but they serve a bigger purpose. Um, you know, so, Ron here, you can see collectors, we have Fisher Road, Acre Bridge Road. Flag Road, it was not, those wouldn't necessarily, you wouldn't necessarily call those higher order roads usually, but because of where, what they're connecting, you know. We're going from the Flag Road and Deerfoot Road, we're connecting Route thirty to Route nine. But just because of where they are, what they do, that's kind of how these get brought into place. Uh, the town has thirteen existing exclusions. Um, now that's based on Massachusetts, what Massachusetts records are, as well as the group one that is not on Massachusetts records, which is Billmore Road. So, and those exclusions, you know, run, kind of, run again, uh, we have Route thirty, pretty much the entire length of the town. The Central Street, Middle Road. Fisher Road, Chestnut Hill Road, School Street, and then, uh, Washington Street, which is a little small piece before it goes into Westboro. Um, so there's a few of these roadways that, do they meet them? Probably, yes, there's, some of them do all of them meet them, maybe, maybe some of them are contributing to issues on other roads. Which, this brings us to the cross of the matter, um, what actually is a heavy vehicle exclusion for? So, um, heavy vehicles exclusions are for. Into commercial heavy vehicles. Um, we have all sorts of public heavy vehicles, DPW trucks, um, utility trucks, public utility trucks. Trash trucks, not necessarily electric. Um, so the idea is that these are, these exclusions are intended in a, um, restricting commercial vehicles. That have a carrying capacity of two and a half tons, which, you look at the little graphic on the right. It's basically five through twelve up there, so, and pretty much anything with six tires. And larger is what, is what these are generally mean to exclude, so these could be landscape trucks. Be larger Amazon UPS delivery trucks that are out there in it. So, which results in, there are exemptions to these exclusions, one being, and locally, any, um. Publicly known vehicle is exempt, so fire trucks, DPW trucks, Massachusetts T trucks, snowplows. Um, any commercial heavy vehicle making a delivery. So, and, so one, one way to, I don't know what that is, say, for the road, the road like virtual drive, um, train drives. Oh, only accessible by a last one. Last one has a heavy vehicle exclusion. So, any truck, any heavy vehicle that needs to make a delivery to either of the roads is exempt from the exclusions on last one. And potentially make sure that that's covered, good. Um, you know, so, anyone getting furniture delivered, or moving out, moving truck, or if they have a contractor going to work on their property, all those structures exempt, so. Then, something to keep in mind as we go forward, and then, lastly, since nineteen ninety-five. Um, state number routes are ineligible to be excluded, so, in this case, that'll be Route nine. Um, and Route eighty-five, um, Main Street is excluded already, so Route thirty's already excluded, so it's grandfathered in. Uh, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be eligible for the one, it doesn't, you posted. And I didn't want to say highways also, you know, so Route nine. Um, requirements, Massachusetts T is the reviewing and approving agency. Um, if your town, they'll do make requests, they will make requests based on the data. And based on requests, um, but they'll go through Massachusetts Boston. General Stekel, um, is the ones for requesting, improving an exclusion, or within Massachusetts. Um, amendments to the MUTCD, which is a federal document, so those are, that's supposed to be Massachusetts works. Generally, they're looking for roadways that have a truck percentage, heavy vehicle percentage of five, eight percent of the daily traffic. Um, or. Either the existing payment structure is just not capable, or not meant to handle those type of trucks. And then, separately, if, um, for whatever reason, it doesn't. Work all day, we can, we can request, uh, make exclusions if on residential streets. In order to put in a heavy vehicle exclusion, you need an alternative route for the vehicles to get around the excluded. Easiest way to accomplish that is to have a route that lies within the entire within the town, and that's all you need. You can also use only state highway, so Massachusetts T-controlled roadways, and so Route nine, Road N. In this case, Route nine, parts of their union, um, state central roadways, which is there. Um, or, you can ask the, under joining town, where you want to move the trucks through, for their permission, their, their, their permissions with that Massachusetts T. That's, if you want, unlikely alternative, but maybe they need something from you, so you can. Yeah, they might need a truck exclusion that they want to route traffic, trucks through, so that's kind of how that would work, so you're aiming to get the. Have the alternative route entirely within the town, which brings us back to the original issue of, we've got a checkpoint in Southworld. Well, there's really no alternative routes around certain regions, just because of the existing exclusion. So, it's just, uh, this, okay, it kind of gives a demographic of the existing heavy vehicle percentages that you identify based on the council review. Um, and, as you can see, the, there are four, there are four roadways that are identified as having greater than five percent. Yeah. Which we have, um, Northboro Road, or section of Northboro Road, that's, um. North of Johnson Road. Flag Road. Parkerville Road. Um, Northport, Route nine, and then South Road, East of eighty-five. So, you know, someone might say, it's like, why not all the trucks on Route nine, Route eighty-five? Strictly a matter of the amount of traffic travel on the road. Um, yeah, one thing to kind of look at is, you can see Oak Hill Road and Route eighty-five, Quarter Road are the same color. Kind of gives you an idea of how many trucks are on Oak Hill Road. So, and then this is a similar graphic. Is kind of depicting the actual number of trucks that are on the road. Uh, Route nine, and North section of Route eighty-five, north of Thermanam Road, carry over five hundred trucks a day. No surprise that it's on Route nine. Yeah, and then orange would be the maximum down, if it's like three hundred, one, between, around three hundred trucks per day. The only road on here that has that color is Oak Hill Road. When I came driving down here, I kind of drove through town today, I saw more trucks, that was, Oak Hill Road was the only road I saw trucks on when it passed. Yeah, so, there were two trucks on Oak Hill Road, I think I saw one on eighty-five more than one, one happened along the bridge. And that was, so, I didn't even see that many on the map, so I might have taken the time to get, but. Um, yeah, but that kind of just gives you an idea of the number of trucks we're talking, so, yeah, over a hundred, hundred, heavy vehicles a day. Which, in the grand scheme of things, is, yeah, not huge, depending on the roadway, but you have Central Street, South Road, Oak Hill Road. Uh, Northboro Road, Route thirty, and Marlboro. Route eighty-five. So, and then, you know, on here, you can see North, Northboro Road, Central Street, and Main Street, and Route thirty are all, are already subject to heavy vehicles. So, then the question is, are those exclusions doing the, doing the job, doing, are they doing what they should be doing? Um. And what can we make, make them work better, yeah, Central Street, there's stuff on Central Street, there's deliveries. There's DPW trucks, so the counts, and one reason that they bump up the percentage of trucks that they're looking for is, it's. Hard to identify what's a commercial truck versus a public truck versus the, just a residential, you know, non, the private truck. Yeah, so it's, they're looking for roadways that have obvious truck issues, and so Central's, you know, looking at this. Oak Hill Road has a significantly higher number of trucks than Central, so there's a. The term, you know, trucks come up Oak Hill Road, and they get onto Route nine, which was kind of observed from the Training Room Council. Um, and then, I guess one thing also to keep in mind is that there's a, there are heavy vehicle exclusions in Ashland. That limit the amount, the ability of heavy vehicles to access Route nine. The intent may have been to come down Southville, up eighty-five, but those trucks appear to be coming up Oak Hill Road, and to access Route nine and westbound. Um, so, that's just kind of, once you get all the, all the data and kind of put together, that's kind of some of the things that we'll do. So, this is just kind of a general slide, showing kind of the routes that we observed. The thick, the solid lines appear to be what would be considered the primary routes through the town. Um, and then the dotted one, the more secondary routes. So, you know, for instance, you know, we have a, um, South Road, there's an obvious track going straight to Ashland to Westboro, so obviously it cuts through. But there's also a other defined route that's going up eighty-five, you know, because there's a definite drop in heavy vehicles traveling west. And then, so they're, they're going up eighty-five. Um, Oak Hill Road, same thing, we observed a, a pattern of them taking the bus off of Route nine. And, you know, and then up at Northboro, Johnson Road, we kind of get the. From what we could tell, the bigger, the bigger trucks were making that, weren't going down Main Street, but were going up. Going back and forth between Westboro and Marlboro, uh, you know, uh, lots of, too bad. Um, yeah, and then we have these kind of smaller, smaller ones that, you know, there's obviously truck patterns on Deerfoot and Flag, there's truck patterns on Parkerville. Um, and those trucks using like Acre Bridge Road to access Marlboro, so. Yeah, this is kind of what we came together, um, and then, so based on some information, based on the data, we kind of pulled together some. Ideas to look, look at moving forward, um. And then that would be, um, you know, kind of our findings. So. There's a few things here, um, so one. We would consider, or consider taking, taking into consideration, uh, removing existing heavy vehicle exclusion on Main Street. Or Route thirty in general. Um. It's, in general, you know, it, it's the, having just been reconstructed, it's probably the. Best road, local roadway in town that's capable of handling the vehicles. Um, and to that note, there's hardly, I don't. We haven't seen, we didn't see a major desire of trucks to kind of come, come through that way, I wouldn't expect a. Major increase in, in, uh, truck traffic because of that. Um, however, in doing that, we don't want to create problems on other, on other roadways, so, by doing a little solve problems on other roadways. So, we did, uh, consider, you know, lay out some consideration for which ones, what roadways you might want to. Add as exclusions, or evaluate, and just, sorry, explanation of the graphic, so the purple. Purple colors are existing exclusions that are, that we were recommending remain. Uh, green was the one to be removed. Um, red were ones to consider requesting exclusions on, and then blue would be, uh, potential night turns. Um, and one road appears twice in this, the reason I'm getting into, but, um, so. For instance, we said, consider Flag Road and Deerfoot. Um, Deerfoot Road on its own doesn't qualify for a, a exclusion, just from, from a percentage, uh, truck percentage. For whatever reason, most of the trucks were counted down on Flag Road, yeah, so, whether that's, that could mean there's a. Pattern that's kind of in that southern part of Flag Road and Deerfoot Road that, you know, is not being observed between Main Street and Flag Road. But, you know, if you want to keep trucks off of Flag Road, you have to keep them off of Deerfoot. Use that more than, so, you know, this, probably, in, in a lot of cases, the problem is, it's like a truck will get onto a excluded roadway, and then all of a sudden, they're on an excluded roadway. You know, so that was kind of why we put a Deerfoot, that's the same reason why, if we're gonna keep the, uh, exclusions on Northboro Road. Then we would recommend excluding Johnson Road, because there's no reason for any commercial trucks to be there anyways, so. That would just prevent any confusion of someone taking a left turn up there and a right turn onto Johnson Road and say. Well, can't go anywhere, I can't go anywhere now, because every other road is excluded, so I'm just gonna keep them. Um, and then, similar with Acre Bridge Road. So. And now what's up, you know, who cares about the trucks that are going down Acre Bridge Road? They're not taking Farm Road to get to Route, and Marlboro to get to Route two. Well, Farm Road is an excluded road, so trucks aren't allowed on Farm Road. So, you get the same, you get the same issue. Yeah, on, uh, Acre Bridge Road, as we had, as, you know, you might have with. Yeah, on, uh, Acre Bridge Road as we had, as, you know, you might have with, um, um, Cedar, Cedar Hill or Jericho Hill where trucks come down and can't, can't get anywhere, you know, so it's a kind of a keeping in mind what's going on on, on the towns around, around, so, to kind of provide a kind of a whole set network here in trying to keep the vehicles on the main roadways. Um, and then Oak Hill Road. We looked at both for a full exclusion. And then as a nighttime exclusion. Uh, the issue with Oak Hill Road is I don't, it was not really a good way to exclude it. Because there's no alternative route around. Um, because it's not excluded in Ashland. So, once, once struck, you know, once struck on there. It's not, um, it's difficult to get to, or difficult to get around. Um, yeah, it's definitely worth asking, uh, DOT for, because it's of the roadways we counted, other than Route nine and Route eighty-five that had the most trucks on, uh, return. Um, they also had highest number of vehicles period. Compared to, other than eighty-five and Route nine. So. Certainly worth asking. I would be skeptical that Mass DOT would grant it because A, it's got the traffic signal at the end, so it's probably one of the safer ways for trucks to get onto Route nine. Um, but yeah, as a may, it's still for the most part a residential roadway, so if, if you do not get a full exclusion, then it might be worth that as being thrown over an exclusion. Um, and then we also uh, mentioned the same thing about Pioneer Road. You know, it's not, it's a there were not a lot of trucks observed on Pioneer Road, but again, it's not a great road to trust in, you know, it's narrow and Edmonds or Parmito, the best roads to trust in, you know, so. Um, and it is a residential neighborhood, so. The idea was that maybe, you know, try, try, try there for the overnight and, you know, there might be some amenability to that, to Mass DOT. Um, and then, other idea to be, um, just to reinforce that, those kind of measures. Would be evaluating where the heavy vehicle signage is. And who's responsible for it is either Mass DOT or the town, depending on what roads, you know, what roads are on. And the issue with some of the signage is that just based on the layout of the roadways, the intersections. Yeah, sometimes you can't see it. Yeah, Richards, uh, is a excluded. Uh. No, no, no. Um, when you're traveling north on Parkerville. And you're going to take a right on Little Road. Well, sign, there's a sign there excluding trucks. But just because of the way the intersection is configured, but you don't see the sign until you turn on it. So, yeah, it might yeah, not be an issue the second time, but, you know, it's just trying to look at all the signs to make sure that they're visible, um. You know, there's some, there's a sign, a sign to overlook on Route thirty once you get outside of downtown. Um. But again, Framingham Road is not an exclusive road, so if a truck is traveling on Framingham Road, they're supposed to go. Can't, they can't get anywhere. Until they, you don't feel like they're excluded. Uh, so, that was kind of our overall look at it, um, and then in the, in the long run, just kind of continuously monitor, if you do remove the, um, you know, if it's decided to ask that, you have to remove that Main Street um, exclusion, or if another exclusion is added, the idea would be to continue, kind of continuously monitor the, those, any impacts. Because you don't want to cause a problem, you know, solve one problem and then cause a problem, that's what you don't want to put a exclusion on Flag Road and Deerfoot Road and then have all the truck traffic go down Parker, or you don't want to, you know. Error, yeah, again, it's just a matter of making sure that the whole thing works together. And, um, that's kind of a general overview. Questions, we can go with specific, kind of go with specific questions.
So, thank you for this, um, I am really impressed of your knowledge, completely wonderful experience, like you're talking about all the roads and stuff, so you seem to know our roads very well. And I also want to thank you for the report, I thought the report was, um, very easy to understand, um, as far as truly what you were trying to say, so he was okay, so I'm going to start questions and we'll go this way this time. Um, so. Why do we have the truck exclusion on Main Street today?
Um, I was told that basically it was, it was to avoid getting trapped, yeah, it was to avoid having Main Street be a cut through for Route nine. Yeah, when Route nine backs up, to avoid traffic coming through. That's one reason, there's a few other reasons. The, you know, the one that was, you had a tow, tow company, it was down on, on Park Towns, because now, which, yeah, so, you know, the idea was to kind of minimize the amount of truck traffic that was related to that. Now, the issue with that is that, that whole business was a school. Or it's kind of exempted from that exclusion, so, because it was, that was their, that was their business, and anything going to and from there was just exempt. So, that's there are a few different reasons for why, that, why that, that exclusion was there in the first place. Um. Yeah, looking back on it, was it a good idea? Yeah, this, this, there's, there's some pros to it, there's or just some cons to it. Yeah, and I, I I don't, yeah, I've worked in and around Southborough for a long time and they haven't seen, you know, seen Route nine back up to the town. Not seeing a huge influx of cut through traffic through the downtown. You know, it does, it does hit, it's like, it does happen, you know. There's obviously, obviously timing, there's nothing to it. But there are enough ways around it. Um. And generally speaking, most, especially with larger trucks. They don't want to leave, leave the, the road like Route ninety. Because there's just, you know, Main Street, you know, Main Street's yeah, a wide road with aggression. Southport standards, we still have to, it's not a straight or a bank.
Because your recommendation of taking that one off, so this whole thing just started because of Flag Road, right? So your recommendation about taking that one off, putting a flag in Deerfoot, um. You seem to think that that's not going to cause a big influx of trucks going into Southborough on Boss River, taking a left on Main Street, right, making that hard left? So you don't think it's going to happen?
I don't think there'll be a major impact to truck, or increase in trucks going through.
And if we were to, to take off the car exclusion on Route thirty. Take it off and never get back because it's a All right, now, let's go to, um. Oak Hill, so Oak Hill is partly in Southborough, partly in Ashland, so you're saying that if you wanted to put the truck exclusion on Oak Hill, and I, that was one of the more surprising things, I saw this as far as sending trucks to Oak Hill. Um, so if we wanted to do that, we really maybe, um, best of all, because you guys get asked on to, we need to, um.
Both of them.
Yeah?
Maybe, or, you know, or, you know, you might be able to get you know, the, I think the, the key with Oak Hill, I think, has something to do with and, I could be wrong, if you didn't go, you know, in Framingham and in Ashland, but yeah, the existing exclusions in Ashland are directing trucks on, on Oak Hill. They're directing trucks into Southborough to access Route nine. That doesn't mean they can't access Route nine by eighty-five. But, the
My point is, if I wouldn't, if I go on South, we'll take the right on eighty-five versus coming down Oak Hill and taking the left.
I, well, I, the, most, most trucks would rather take a left instead. So that's, that's, that's part of it, and then I think they just don't want to drive, you know, if they're in Ashland, they can just go you know, cross and, or
Okay, but to be clear, I'm not sure, so since Oak Hill is in both towns, DOT is not going to let us put a truck exclusion on Oak Hill unless Ashland asks for the same thing, and they're not going to make Ashland do it, they can't.
Yeah, you, you, yes, the, the town will have to, the towns will have to work together, if, if you, if you wanted, if, if both towns wanted to, so, and then I, you know, they may, they may be getting residential requests too, so.
But if, what would it, that exclusion would be the same thing, you'd still have to give
So that exclusion, you'd probably be, had better a lot, just because it's you know, both, in both towns, they're, they're residential roadways, and it's, and there really weren't a lot of, we didn't observe a lot of heavy vehicles overnight.
Okay, so now let's go to our, our flag, we, the emphasis was, so you say you're going to do Flag, you're, because you're going to have to still have everything I mentioned, if you do Flag. But Deerfoot doesn't qualify as far as the flag sentence. Uh, so how do you get the DOT to buy that as a subjective thing?
So, I mean, yeah, so we'd have to, we'd have to speak with DOT, and I, and I think, you know, we, we spoke into DOT about this, um, in general terms, not necessarily Flag Road in general, but the idea, you know, and I think they're appreciative of the town kind of taking a step back and looking at the town as a whole. And kind of, you know, looking at, you know, what makes sense rather than, you know, kind of reacting street by street. Um. And they, and it's just a matter of, like, you know, there's, there, there, there are a couple of roads. I forget the one, but it's right on, right on the west side of four ninety, the northwest corner of four ninety-five. That is a truck exclusion. There's nowhere for any heavy vehicles to go, that are delivered, I mean, so, you know, there, there's just a, there's some that are just not beneficial. You know, so I, and it, so I think Mass DOT, you know, if, if Mass DOT, if you were to take the one off Main Street. And this one, in that way, extends from the Westborough Town Line all the way including the off-ramps onto Route nine or Framinath. Yeah, so, there's no, you know. Any truck that you see on there is there technically. So, yeah, so it's like, I think, I think they would be, they might be appreciative of that and understand why you're doing certain so, so I, I think there's a way to make that case that this whole connection to the school.
Okay, so stick on again Flag Road, but so you've got Middle Road that already has exclusion. Middle Road north.
Yes.
Okay, then you've got Parkerville, which does not have an exclusion. Okay, next up would be Deerfoot and then Flag, so if you did Flag, Deerfoot, you're got Middle, then doesn't that risk putting a bunch of traffic on Parkerville that has a school, you have to school on it?
So there's the there is a potential, um. The I think the first off, the intersection of Parkerville and Main Street is much worse trying to get out, if, if you're trying to take a right under Route nine. I would rather, I personally would rather take your right off of, um Flag than Parkerville, just the way it's contributed. Um. Yeah, I think the, the goal here is to kind of force people, you know. You should have trucks, uh, would, to go get out on Route eighty-five, or take a right, you know, if, if they, so if they're coming, if, if we're concerned about trucks coming off Johnson Road, like that, and coming down Flag and Deerfoot and Flag, we'd rather have them go right here.
Yeah?
And go up, and, no, I think, I think, I think we'd rather go Route thirty or Route nine. You know, Route thirty, uh, west rather than take Parker, yeah, obviously some of them are trying to get to four ninety-five, so there's, we, there's ways we're not going to be able to solve everything, and that's why I think, you know, it's a matter of you know. Hopefully if we do the, if we take the, because I think we only observed well, I'm, I'm trying to remember from the council, but the, the three, we observed three trailer trucks on Flag Road. When we did the counts. But the, the question is you know, and then not all of them went all the way up to Main Street. Yeah, so the, you know, some of them were doing the loop. Um, there are
There's a reason they do that, and we actually just did, yeah, okay, so just to be clear, no turn of two, so, um. Because I think that's where the biggest concern is going to be, is taking the exclusion on and usually, and we have to do that if we're going to get it on Flag and Deerfoot.
Yeah, so there's, the issue is, you have no other route that is not on, that does not incorporate another exclusive route to get around Flag Road. Yeah, so you, because one way or the other, you're there in Main Street, which is excluded in both directions.
Okay, so we have to do that, if we want Flag and then Deerfoot, and, um, you believe based on your experience that we really aren't going to cause a big problem on Route thirty, Main Street, thirty, sorry, big trucks going through town, or pretty big road?
Yeah. That would be, that's like, that, that, from what I, from what I've experienced, um working in Southborough, around Southborough, the majority of the trucks they're trying to, they're trying to get to Route nine, or they're trying to get to Pike or four ninety-five. Um. You know, I haven't they tend to, I, I've seen, you know, for the most part, they seem to be using, using eighty-five the way it's supposed, or the way it's supposed to be.
Thank you, I'm just trying to make a couple of specific questions to your report, so you mentioned that Gilmore, Mass DOT doesn't have Gilmore as a
It's all listed on the map, Karen, um, pointed out.
So does that mean that even though we do it and it's posted that
We can, yes, we can, we can
Definitely.
She, she, as I said, and, and so there, I mean, there's
Okay.
There, that, that can definitely be added to the, to the map based on the information.
Okay, so. Just to touch on quickly, um, on, you know, what is an HBE, we talked about like landscape trucks. So, just to be clear, for instance, if we put a, a restriction on Deerfoot and Flag, landscape trucks over a certain size would not be allowed, or would there be an exception for those?
If, if, if they, if, 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 so if they are, if they're going to a house, a residence on Flag Road
Just wanting to be clear, and I'm going to get asked that question.
That's the second part, and if they're not, only they can't
If they're not, if, if they don't have, if they don't have a destination on that move, or they, or a road that they can't get to the road, then
Yeah.
Then they shouldn't be on them.
Okay, so, when you did your counts, um buses are number four, they're not number five, how do you exclude them on your counts, because you did the counts in March?
Yep.
So, Parkerville, the numbers were high, and I'm wondering if a percentage of that was because of buses. Um, or have you excluded them when you did?
So we, so we have buses counted separately. So
Through your counters, does it, I'm just trying to
So, 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 the way the counts work, they're canvas.
Got it, okay, fair enough, okay, that was an easy one. And, um, yeah, I had questions on like the alternate, what would the alternate roads be for, uh, Oak Hill specifically? Um, which kind of answered that, and if we did apply, try to apply, say, for all of these roads, including Oak Hill and Pioneer, we do apply for an HBE for both day or fall, and then apply at the same time for an overnight, or would your recommendation be based on the requirements that Kathy spoke about with Ashland?
I mean, we, I mean, we'd probably have to talk to Mass DOT about this, without, um, one thing, one thing I will just point out before we go. Yeah, there will need to be more data collected prior to any application. So, um, just, just, just we didn't, we didn't count, you know, so we didn't count data on every if, you know, we didn't actually, we didn't, we didn't count, we didn't take it, for instance, for Acre Bridge Road.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't take a, a continuous track account on Acre Bridge Road, because it didn't seem warranted, for what we were, what we if you were going to ask for an exclusion on Acre Bridge Road, you would have to get the data, we may have, we may have it already in, in some project. But, um, I don't know, it's a little similar, is there, something, so, um. But, um. Yeah, so, it's just a matter, it's a matter of how it gets broken down, but
Chelsea, you want to go next?
Sure, thank you, um, and thank you for the report, I also found it very helpful, um. So, on the Oak Hill truck exclusion, um, if Ashland has truck exclusions um, on their side, does that mean that we gave written permission, um, to have Oak, Oak Hill be an alternate Um, on their side, does that mean that we gave written permission to have Oak, Oak Hill be an alternate route?
Honestly. It's, it's, it's a matter of, I'm not, I, I, I'm not entirely sure what their alternate route was that they submitted. So it could have been. So. You know, from their, from their standpoint, it could have been go west or go east and use a road in Ashland to get up to Route nine. Knowing whether, whether, whether they knew anyone was going to take that or not. It was still. It's still a reasonable route within the town, so they wouldn't have needed written permission. And I, I'm not entirely sure when then. When that exclusion was going to affect.
Okay, um, related to the flag. Um, route, if we were to put a, um, HVE on, um, on there, what would the alternate route be for someone going? Um, westbound on Route nine?
Yeah, to get to Main, to get to Main Street. Or to, oh, to get, to get.
Yeah, like, let's say, let's say they were coming out of, um. Coming out of. A business that's west of eighty five.
So. The alternate route could either be send them back to eighty five and go down to Route nine. I would have to double check because. Where the state highway on Route thirty ends. Because if the state highway goes all the way. To Route nine, you don't need, that can be the alternative route. Because it's, you don't need, you don't need.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, so you would still have to rely on that connection though in Westboro?
If, well, you know, you, you, we could, you could write the alternative route as being. It's, you go back to eighty five southbound and access Route nine westbound from Quarter Road. Yeah, so they'd have to either. These, and then, or just trying to think of, um, businesses. Yeah, if you're traveling westbound and you're there, they can, they can continue west because Westboro doesn't have an exclusion.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, trying to understand if we would need to get any sort of written, um, permission from Westboro in the scenario that you've outlined here.
Well, I would have to, we'd have to check with DOT because Route thirty is exempt. Route thirty in Westboro is exempt from heavy vehicle exclusion, so you might not need.
Okay. Okay, I think those are. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Same.
Yeah, the process question, Kenny. I actually have a number of questions that I'm not eager to spend a lot of time scrolling through right now, but. Can, if you're interested, maybe follow up in the vision with Greg to talk about some of this stuff and make sure that I understand.
We're not willing to turn exclusion. We're just trying to listen, ask our questions, and then decide where our next step is. So I see no reason for people not to follow.
Um, just a couple of highlights here. Again, very helpful study. Good ideas here in terms of things we might want to consider.
Yes, so Mark is suggesting that what we should do is go through Mark or Vanessa to, to funnel any questions after Mike to, to Greg.
I guess one of the things that I would value is the opportunity to talk directly to the back and forth and ask questions, because it's a follow up question to the topic. Conversation there, so. Let me do that. Seems to be a deal.
Well, that can get expensive. Well, you know. All sorts of, I mean, it just depends on, depends on, on how, how deep the conversations go. That's also just trying to facilitate it, just trying to make sure that. We're not, we're not doing too much on time, which is going to get, you know.
Or maybe allocate certain amount of time, half hours.
We've got some room left in the twenty five K, um, so that which concern is the, um, additional cost of dealing if we start on margin ahead of time? Just okay, that's what I'm trying to ask.
Just trying, just trying to keep, just trying to keep an eye on the dollars, that's all.
Few questions then. Greg, did you look at development work in, uh, Westboro, particularly in the Amazon facility over there? As well as other things that they're doing, and that's a big project. I think some things that are going to affect traffic from the west and south, south, or those kind of things, I think are likely to increase the pressure there.
Yeah, we didn't look specific at specific developments. I mean, it was a. We have general backgrounds.
Okay, and I think it's worthwhile to sort of think of hypothetically, so if you get a lot of pressure from the southwest here. Maybe protect it on Southfield, for example. And avoid a crunch there. Um, one of the complaints that I've heard a number of times about the final road. Is that there is a big surge of FedEx trucks given the New York Avenue facility here. So if we had an overnight exclusion, for example, if you make that run through like. Eight or nine AM, for example, to not, uh, allow that kind of push on the road, it's a very residential road there.
You know, that's something you could ask DOT about, um, generally, they're aiming at building more at a kind of ten, ten PM to six AM kind of.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, that's it. I mean, it's definitely.
I hate to pick on a particular organization, but that sounds like, and I've accidentally caught up on some of that traffic behind the convo.
Yeah.
Also, um, in terms of the Oak Hill, again, that would be another place where, you know, you can't get the full exclusion extended overnight.
Yeah, so that, again, that's something, and I think, I think, I think this is going to require. Kind of a sit down with mass DOT, go over, go over everything there.
Several possible proposals.
And see what they're, see what they're.
And, um, you know, again, I, I think, thinking about Ashland and Popington, for example, I understand what's going on there. It could be pressure there. Try to anticipate some of that. I think we very used to. And why, again, can't we do Parkerville? Or, or the route nine.
So, um. There's no reason, there's no reason why we can't.
The traffic.
Yeah, so it's just a matter of, if the percentages were. High, it's.
Yeah.
It was kind of.
Is the school traffic there, um, I'm not the justification for that.
That's a, it's potential.
A lot of school traffic, a lot of kids walking out there. Yes, and I hear a lot of complaints about student. Parkerville, which is not quite this issue, but, you know, to, yeah. Cutting that off as a new cut through.
That's not.
Okay, um, that's, that's all we have. I guess. I think in the next few days, I will, uh, stand down and. Any follow up questions, I'll come through Mark. But thank you for your, uh, your time.
Okay, so, okay, so lots of people coming here. Ms. Phil, come on in.
Yeah, hi, Miss, um, I'm Leah, twenty sixth Clifford Road. I'm here as a president. I'm confused because I'm looking at the scope of the proposal. So we're talking about counts on, um, Flag and on Parkerville. And as I look at this, the proposal, which was included in the, um, in the packet, the automatic traffic recorder counts and the traffic movement counts. None of the eleven that are listed, even that in Flag. So I'm, I'm at work about some a little confused as to how we have data points on those two roads.
Um, so we took, we, we took traffic counts on Flag Road previously. So that's where, that's where those came from, uh, as part of the original request to put in the heavy vehicle exclusion on Flag Road. Uh, the ones on Parkerville. Came from that, uh, mass DOT had a record of those, so we used those, utilized those as a. As a basis. So, yeah, a, anywhere where historic mass DOT data was used. If a heavy vehicle exclusion was requested, we'd have to, again, get additional.
Okay, so then my follow up question would be, um, part of your deliverables are to do this data right at breakdown data presentation. Is what was included as your final, or what was presented here, final, or to say include data tables that will be accessible to public?
The data, the data can be provided.
Perfect. And, and my only comment on this is the presentation was easy. I think legends are really helpful. So although you know the colors, no one else does, so it'd be good to add those.
Agreed, yeah. So, I appreciate that.
Okay, so I want to, um, start in a different place. I think Southborough is really unique in that we have a lot of these arterials and, um, state roads. So just to remind everybody, and I didn't really hear a lot of it, but I might have missed what you were saying. So we've got Route thirty, Route nine, Route eighty five, Route four ninety five, and Mass Flag. That's where a truck should be. So I'd like to rather think about this in terms of where should the trucks be instead of where should the trucks not be? And so that's where the trucks should be. Um, anybody that's, uh, truck or car traveling on, for example, Route, um, nine. And they each turn around, they're going in their own direction, they miss Kent, whatever, they can simply go do the clover leaf. They can go up four ninety five, do clover leaf, turn around, or they can go into Westboro, they can use, I think it's computer research drive or something over there, and they can turn around. So, um, I don't see really any reason why trucks need to be, um, you know. Going on our roads that have already exclusions, Deerfoot, Flag, Parkerville, that sort of thing. Um, because I think we're kind of unique as a town because we have these roads that are already designated, you know.
Those roads are.
They don't have exclusions. So, so meaning which ones?
Deerfoot, Flag, Parker, none of those.
No, which are only one right there that has exclusions. So that's what we're talking about is add exclusions to possibly two out of three, maybe three out of three.
Right, so I'm sorry, again, I. Again, I, I'm just saying, um, I think that there's five routes that trucks could use, and I don't agree. I'm sorry, but I don't agree that we have, if, if you put a truck exclusion on Flag Deerfoot, that you would have to take the exclusion off of Route thirty. I don't think that they're connected at all. I think there's, um. You know, some towns have set up things like safety zones. Northborough just did something like this because they were concerned about traffic around Bartlett Street. And so we, Flag Deerfoot is the entrance, Deerfoot is the entrance to two of our schools. Uh, on Main Street, we have an entrance to Fay School. So I think it would actually be absolutely disastrous. To put trucks in our downtown area. We just wanted to speak planning with our, uh, downtown district and master plan to talk about having a more walkable downtown. And people coming out and having more like a meeting place. I just can't imagine trucks zipping down there. And if we opened up Parkerville, for example, um, or, or that section of, uh, you know, Main Street, we'd be opening up Parkerville. We'd maybe be opening up Sears. There'd be cars going through Ledge Hill. It would be, I think, disastrous.
But hold on, because that's what I was trying to get to. Yeah, so what Greg said is that he doesn't believe that if we were to take it off Route thirty. He, he says that we have to take it off Route thirty if we want it on Flag Deerfoot, so we got to get this straight.
Is that, is that correct? Can I, why is that correct?
This is just a matter of having a alternate route around, around that road.
But the routes of eighty five and nine.
You can't get to eighty five.
From where?
From Main Street.
Well, so it's an exclusion. I know that was one of, I actually had been asking to see the protocol for a long time because the question that was asked, I think, wasn't really the question that we were all trying to get to. Although I know you were trying to answer a lot of questions. But the question was, if you're a truck on Main Street, right, how do you get, you know, to across town, where you need to? You shouldn't be on Main Street because there's an exclusion. So trucks that are trying to come through our town, they've got thirty, they've got eighty five. I'm sorry, not thirty, ninety, nine, eighty five, you can do the clover leaf, they can go Pike, you can, you know, you can do a number of four ninety five. We have a huge variety of choice. I'm really concerned, um, for a couple of things. We do, on Flag Road, thank you for finding out this for us. We, we have, we meet the minimum requirement. In many towns, um, and I've given examples to Mr. Yen, I think from, uh, Denham and maybe Northborough. The exemption, um, for, you know, allowing a, a road to have a truck exclusion is if there's schools on the road.
That's a, so.
And, and we do, and so we've got entrances to, to try here and, and near you. So I'm, I'm very supportive, um, of putting the truck exclusion there. But not at the expense really of closing, uh, of funneling trucks through our downtown. I don't see that connection at all.
I believe it might be Denham, Dan, which is one of those, one of the two.
I think it's Denham. Yeah.
So Denham had, that's a, so that's a. I think now it's a bylaw, it's something that the town has set up. In addition to the master OT requirements, but they also. Uh, don't allow. Heavy vehicle exclusions on arterials or collectors. Which are. Like. It is, so, so, there is a.
We did allow the exception because of school.
So, and it's whether or not they, you know, it's just a matter of how, it's a matter of how the town wants to go about it. And then it's a matter of if the, it's, it, it all goes back to master key. So it's, I, so the safety, the safety zone is fine. Yeah, that's, that's a town. The heavy vehicle exclusion. Easy to prove on this. So that, and, and because in, in reality, because it's the heavy vehicle exclusion that will get added to the state map. That controls the, that the, um, the operator. See. So that's.
Can I just make sure I understand? Because I, I don't see how opening up Main Street or to trucks helps or is connected in any way. Um, you, you have already said, if you, if you have a delivery, the safety vehicle. By truck, it, it can get, it can go where it needs to go. So we have no issue because we've got north, south, and east, west.
So if a, so if a, on the side, if a truck, if a truck pulls on to. From Route nine on the Flag Road.
From Route nine, yeah.
So how do they, how would they, what mass DOT is going to look at is how are they going to get out?
So, but if there's an exclusion, it wouldn't be.
There, that's, I, I, we, you know, we, we did speak to mass DOT about you about this initially. And they, they were not. Kind of. They weren't all that receptive to, and providing that because there was no. What, there was no exit out of. That Flag Road here.
It's really, I mean, I think, I don't mean to take it every time, but I think of it like it's a cut through. And we have beautiful, we've just done complete streets. We have eighty five, the whole intersection, eighty five, everything works beautifully now. And I, and that is really where the trucks should go. And so any truck that needs to get into our downtown can get there if it's a delivery. But they shouldn't be cutting across Deerfoot to get there. But even if the slug board decide to put an exclusion on Deerfoot. They can still go downtown if they've got a delivery, but they should be using eighty five and nine. Or doing the clover leaf or using another way to turn around if they need to get to where they need to get to.
So, yeah, I mean, we can, again, we can, we can make that argument. It's not a, there's no. It's a grandfather exclusion, so that's not.
I, I guess I would just say. An exclusion on anything tonight. Okay, so, um, we got four more people that want to.
Yeah.
Just can't put your husband. Um, okay, so can we bring over this to, um, um, Diane?
Yes.
Hi, Diane, go ahead.
Hi. I do the video portion, but I can't see it. Um, I wanted to say I'm.
Your name, where you live?
Um, Diane Johnson, eleven Johnson Road. And I concluded the same thing. I've read the full report several times and I've read it carefully. And I concluded basically what the last, um, member, board member said. There's really no benefit to Southborough residents to, um, eliminate our HVE or that restriction that is on Route thirty. And, um, there's a lot of problems. I, I mean, I commuted this way for sixteen years down Route thirty. And I can tell you, it is, um, it was always difficult and backed up. But I didn't have to contend with, with trucks or, or other problems that might be there that would back it up even more. And often I would find that traveling this route, I would certainly have to make stops. And there would be plenty of stops for pedestrians in the area trying to cross back and forth around Fay School. So there's, there's that whole issue. We've redeveloped the entire area in that downtown area. So there's, there's that whole issue. We've redeveloped the entire area in that downtown area very nicely. And we've made it much more pedestrian favorable. And I don't see putting truck traffic through there as a very good idea. The other thing that I had, as I said, I did read the information very carefully that was put together by, by VHB. And one of the things that was mentioned tonight, he said that there was greater than 5% truck traffic on Northborough Road. He is telling you only the section beyond Route 90, by the Interstate 90, the Mass Pike, by that bridge. He's telling you about truck traffic that is coming in off of Simorano Drive. And it's just to the industrial buildings down in that area. It is not into the residential area. So I'm, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that you are aware of that. The other thing too is the reason, now in his report, he said that he did not go down Johnson Road because Johnson Road was closed. Well, that is not true. Northborough Road, a portion of Northborough has been closed, as many of you know, for almost a year due to Mass dot fixing a bridge. But if he had come down Johnson Road, what he would have seen is a sign telling trucks that they can't cross over the bridge, the CSX bridge over there because, one, it is too narrow and it can't maintain the weight of those trucks. That's not changing. The reason that he said there was no exclusion on Johnson Road, well, there's never been an exclusion because trucks coming down Johnson Road couldn't go any further. They couldn't go over the bridge at Northborough Road. And at the bridge at Northborough Road, the town had approved for residents on Chestnut Hill Road to now use that as an entrance and an exit for a portion of Chestnut Hill. So it is not, now it is a two-way street for a portion of it. It enters right where the, right with a bridge, you, you do the turn and the bridge is right there. That's where you enter from Chestnut Hill Road. So I don't see that as ever being open for any possible reason. But those are some of the points I wanted to make, and I just wanted to reiterate the fact that there probably is no benefit to us as residents of Southborough. It might benefit Route 9, but it will not benefit us. You also have to have an agreement with Westboro on the west end of this town of Southborough. They've never had that kind of truck traffic. And trucks cannot get under the bridge that is right before McDonald's in Westboro. They won't fit. So there's some issues to be discussed, and I thank you for an option of speaking.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Hi, Howard Rose, member of advisory, but speaking as a citizen. I have a different view. One, I was shocked to learn that Main Street actually had a truck exclusion when I, when we started this process, being a numbered highway. My concern, living off of Flag Road, that all the other roads we're talking about have sidewalks, except for Deerfoot and Flag, even Parkerville, while I have no desire to put any more traffic down there or even more trucks down Main Street. I would gladly give up some of that just because there are sidewalks and it's safer. I think that is the paramount reason we're doing this is safety. And anything we can do, I was very pleased to see in this report that, that Flag meets the requirements. I think we've known that for a while, but safety is the ultimate thing we're looking for here, and I think sidewalks play a lot into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Yeah, thank you. Jonathan Green, Ten Tower Road. My understanding is there's no correlation eliminating the exclusion on Route 30 for the Flag exclusion. The town voted for this exclusion quite some time back. I don't believe we should wait any longer to move forward on this. As Howard mentioned and a number of folks have mentioned, there's a major safety concern on Flag Road due to the width of the road. Anyone that thinks having HV, HVEs accessing Flag has no experience on Flag Road. Flag's a major residential road with kids walking, riding bikes, and it also feeds the schools on the top side. And it's narrower than any of the other roads in the area with no sidewalks. So I don't, I don't understand why we should wait any longer for this exclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Branton?
Hi, Kevin Branton, 58 Flag Road, member of the Conservation Commission, but speaking as a private resident. I don't know if you had to say that or not, but I will. So I am completely for the truck exclusion on Flag Road, but I don't think it needs to come at the expense of sacrificing the truck exclusion on Main Street. This whole truck study was initiated because the town was concerned about unintended consequences. The one thing these truck exclusions give you is it gives you entries in the GPS database. GPS for these trucks will not recommend these roads if they're excluded. The moment the exclusion's gone, any route that gets you down these roads is now open when there's traffic. So this will open up Sears Road, it'll open up Parkerville Road, any road off of Main Street is now fair game. It was, you know, the removing the exclusion was done because we needed an alternate route for Flag. The alternate route completely ignored the Cloverleaf on 9. So I don't know why, if you're at Nance pulling out in a truck, you wouldn't get up on the Cloverleaf and come back down a Route 9 East and take Route 85 north to get to the center of town. If you don't even want to do the Cloverleaf, there's computer drives to Research Drive over in Westboro. Two of those roads are actually designated state truck route. And so Westboro should have far less problem with that than having trucks going all the way down to Route 30 through residential areas, even though the 230, there's a lot of houses along there. Only to come up to Southborough, truck is through to Main Street and be stuck, so. So it just doesn't seem like any of this was thought through very clearly. But I think, you know, the other thing is, once you get rid of that Main Street truck exclusion, you're not going to get it back because the state stopped handing those out back in 1995. So you have to be really careful if you're going to do that. Thank you.
Christie?
Mr. Mary? Hi.
Hi.
This is Christie De Mary. I'm at 18 Flag Road. I believe that, yes, we should move forward with the truck exclusion on Flag Road due to the safety concerns, no sidewalks, and the children going to and from the two schools down at the end of Flag and then, you know, crossing over onto Deerfoot. And then I also have a concern relative to Mrs. Cook voting on this because it's my understanding that she is a tenant of Mr. De Petri. And we've had a long road with the Park Central project. And I just feel like that would be a conflict of interest for her to be presiding over this.
We're about to address that in the next section, in the next agenda. Is that it as far as your comments on the truck exclusion?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That it as far as your comments on the proposed truck exclusions?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you think about the recess?
Yes, I'm in recess.
Can you caution more?
So I've cleared if I'm going to. Thank you, Greg. Do you want that back? Now. Thank you. Thank you.
Over here. Okay, so we are reconvening at nine eighteen. Okay, so next agenda is we are going to start discussion tonight of our response to Mass Housing as far as the recently applied for fully project for Park Central. So as everybody knows, some people like for Mass Housing that basically says we got to August twenty second to submit our comments as far as this project goes. There is an automatic fifteen day extension of the Asper and which more to affect the process to have that extended to September thirtieth to make sure that residents who are out of town, et cetera, have a chance to get their comments. The last time this was submitted for version one in Park Central, a consolidating package was submitted from included comments from various affected boards, et cetera, and residents. So one big package will then. So the purpose of the meeting tonight is is basically to talk about the process of gathering our comments, however, your letter of good. Before we get started, I am going to disclose fact that I have followed a closure of a chance of conflict interest with the town clerk that disposes the fact that I am, my company is a tenant in one of a building in South Grove, one thirty two Turnpike Loop, of which Bill De Petri owns a Kisa. So that's how much he has, he owns a Kisa. I had called the attorney general and disclosed that to them. They have confirmed that he not have a financial conflict interest. So therefore, as far as that going to dispose this, which is an appearance of conflict interest. So if anyone is interested, the town clerk has come.
Yes, I also filed a similar disclosure last week that I'm a attorney at a firm called Con Cavanaugh. And between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty, our firm represented a company that one of Mr. De Petri's companies was suing. So the firm was adverse to the company, which is related to the applicant in this case. And I spoke to the attorney of the day and she just, she advised that I file a two sixty eight disclosure. And I filed that with the county clerk last week. So and I'd like the disclosure form that I filed to be part of the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, and so back to the substance of it. So we are going to end up with more time to ensure we get a comprehensive response to Mass Housing that is going to reflect all concerns that we've identified as far as this project goes. So to the residents that are interested in this, we need, you know, whatever you wanted to send to us, we will include emails, letters, et cetera. They should be sent to the select board. And by any means you want to. And we've got the response from conservation commissioner already, by some planning board is pretty clear a response. I don't know if you're going to send your separately, you want to go through our package, that's your call. So our job is just to basically start accumulating our comments with Mr. Purple as far as what we think her concerns are. So that over the next meeting or two, we will end up with the package that we think is the package that we want to send to Mass Housing in response to their request. Any questions? Well, we asked, so August twenty second is the date that we sent the letter, right? So in the letter, they say you can have an automatic fifteen day extension, right? So that takes us to what, September seventh or so? Mark has specifically talked to our representative, Mass Housing, Michael Busby, and asked for September thirtieth. He's waiting for that response. And so
September thirtieth?
September thirtieth.
Well, you give fifteen days, but you know, I framed, I framed the ask in that, you know, we're doing this in the summertime. A lot of people disengage. You know, it's a big project. It's important. And I think it would be good to maybe, for transparency purposes, to get some additional time. And when people do come back, they do have some time to be able to catch up a little bit and then provide the comments. So that's why, you know, I asked on the thirtieth, maybe get a little bit less, but maybe at the thirtieth now, their process is going to be, you know, maybe a hundred days. I don't think it impacts what Mass Housing has to do on there.
Good.
So they tell us that a meeting scheduled to accommodate, so September seventh is pretty much only meant for fifteen days.
So what I was thinking was, I mean, if there's a date series in that six is that we need to get our individual comments in to mark a couple of weeks near something like that.
And so I guess we said that, so we need to set a date. So Chelsea, any comment you want to make at this point?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, so now we need to set a date that we agree that there's no time for all of us to hear comments and that you really should incorporate it in this letter. Mark would then draft the letter and present it to us and then we'll discuss it in the meetings for us, but.
Simultaneously, residents can, or other wards. Okay, should we ask for those comments end of August or something like that to be able to kind of collection that for September seventh?
Well, it really depends on what Mass Housing says as far as whether they get more than fifteen days.
I did send out to the board the last time that we sent such a letter to Mass Housing in two thousand thirteen. So you had a select board letter.
Yep.
And you had all the various resident comments and everything all behind that. So it was a packet of information.
I just don't know who else is going to comment besides Pidmore and Concon.
We do have, we do have a couple of resident comments that
Besides, I've got reports. So as far as we'll say.
Some individuals, some individual comments.
So you guys keep in mind what we're saying as far as deadline, as far as letters goes, if you want to go to our office.
So are we, is the plan getting to public size to the public when? I, I would hope, Mark, that you would hear back from Mass Housing or if not, you again, kind of pressing a little bit.
I think you do. I poke against that.
Okay, I would keep poking only because, I mean, it's a big difference between September seventh and September thirtieth. For the people to get their comments in. And I would really hope that they would anticipate this. And well, anticipate that we may potentially ask for more immediate comment. I think it's important.
Um, so as far as, I think your question was, how will we disseminate that info once we get the date? We will disseminate it. We're able to, that's where you do that as far as making sure everybody knows that we've got, this is updated.
So if by the end of the week, we don't hear anything back, should, we should put something out Sunday seventh? Or the end of August, whatever.
End of August is what's coming to us, I think. So he might kind of have a chance to put it all together. Because he may, there may be comments in that that he thinks should, we didn't, right? So he's got a chance to read everything and amalgamate it and put it together in a coherent way. So I think that anyone that's coming that's going to go with our package, at least we have an August thirty question, you just need to say that tonight. All right, so we're done saying that. That date's worked. So that's three weeks.
When the changes then, you'll
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that people understand what the timeline is. I don't want someone to feel that they didn't have an opportunity to come.
And work to, again, publicize externally through Facebook, blog, whatever.
And we have done that so far. And as that goes along, we continue to update that as we get more information.
Good.
So we've got our town council with us tonight on Zoom, Mr. Calama, who is a precious speaker. JD, you want to say anything?
From you.
We can't hear you.
On the timing issue? No, I don't have much to say on the timing.
Okay, any public comment as far as the process that we're talking about, which is basically step one here? Okay, so Mr. Green, come on over.
Yes, thank you. And Ms. Cook, I appreciate your disclosure. I, I do feel like there's a little bit beyond that, beyond renting property from Mr. De Petri. And this isn't a question of character. I just really want a transparent process. And anybody involved to be transparent with the citizens. We obviously had quite the, quite the experience the last time around. Ms. Cook, you, you've been an outspoken defender of Mr. De Petri. You've actually blogged on myselfpro.com about contributions made to charities. So I, I just don't feel like it's appropriate. I think the relationship does go beyond the renting of property. Additionally, please, go ahead.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Green.
Additionally, with Mr. Dennington, he did play a key role in the approval process of the comprehensive permit as a member of the ZBA, which was later deemed against the law. This caused major detriment, detriments to the citizens. He was arguing for years alongside the developer against the, the citizens of South Grove. And I don't think it's appropriate for him to participate regardless, and not sure why he would want to. I'll have comments on the application, but I'll, I'll save that.
I'll just say briefly, I don't contest accurate.
So why don't you go ahead and say what's with that?
Because I was not on the three members EBA board that approved the comprehensive permit.
You were part of also approving the use variance and as part of that as well. Yeah, I mean, Andrew, we, we went through this for a year. I mean, I mean, I don't think there's any question that you were a key part of approving the process with Park Central the first time around. And I, I just don't understand why you would, you would want to be a part of that if the citizens have an issue with it. And I, I don't think I'm the only one that feels that way.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Do you have any other comments as far as the actual process that we are starting tonight?
Not the process, but the application itself, I certainly do. So I'm not sure if you're ready for that.
We don't want to over zoom. We want you to send a letter, send an email to Mr. Purple as far as any concerns that you'd like to raise with this initial communication with Mass Housing.
Is the board going to discuss some of the challenges that they see with the application with the citizens or that's going to go into that letter tonight?
We're not discussing that tonight. Tonight, we're just setting the process to accumulate the comments that we need to amalgamate to put into this initial correspondence, which is the first step in this process.
Okay, well, we're, we're just interested to know what those areas might be because reading the application itself, there's quite a few misleading things that are associated with it, including the use variance still being alive. If for any reason the use variance is still alive, then the the, the actual contents of the use variance go completely against what the use variance is written for. So it's kind of like cake and eat it too type situation. So I, I feel like, you know, there's certain things that this board needs to call out that are completely false within that application. There's also major concerns around things like safety, traffic on Flag Road, proximity of five story buildings to two story buildings, the density of a project that sits up against the, in acre zone residential neighborhood. The list goes on and on. So I, I'm just hoping that this time around, the boards in town are going to listen to the citizens, are going to have the same concerns and are going to voice those concerns. I don't think that happened last time around. So we just really want a transparent process where the town is going to work with us and not against us, which we feel like happened the last time. And you know, that's where our concerns come with people participating that, that maybe we, we feel didn't give up the right process the last time we had to go through this. And if we're going to go through it again, then we need people that are going to support the citizens and the views of the citizens.
So the comments you just made are perfectly different comments as far as concerns. So I would suggest putting those in a letter or an email to Circle.
Yeah, I would just hope that, that, that those comments are also going to come from this board, not just the citizen letter that sits in the back of a packet.
Thank you.
I'm Ari Land, my sister's neighbor, speaking as a resident. The question that I would have is, is probably at the site visit. You had let Mr. Busby know that the board has left and voted in October twenty sixteen around a flag exclusion for Park Central egress. And I'm just curious if the board will, I don't know how board decisions from prior boards that you guys aren't existing, you know, many of you weren't on. How do those convey through the future decisions? So will you uphold those types of decisions that the board has left and made in my scene? And we heard it out through your letter.
So as I mentioned there, I mean, obviously, Marty, it's, it's a discussion. The board hasn't got to that point of discussing what we want to put in the letter. I know past boards, I mean, I wasn't on the board, none of us were on the board at that time. But we, we as a board, never took a new position on that. I think the, the thought process was, you know, the board didn't feel they needed to change the position that prior boards had taken. So I would imagine as we're writing our letter, those are going to be some of the points that some members on this board are going to want to include as well. So I, I think it's a little premature tonight, but I hear what you're saying. And it's, it's obviously, it's a concern that I have as well as I've run into Mass Housing. So you can anticipate further discussion on that.
Thank you. And take it a little further, Marty. We have started gathering information from the first version and started reading what to make sure that we were up to speed on everything before. And we've also started talking to some of those members of the past like board as far as why they did what they did with the thought process was, et cetera. So we do think what happened before is relevant to now. So.
Stay tuned.
Anyone else? Anything else that anyone want to talk about as far as this process?
Are we going to, just a process question, are we going to talk about the thoughts, the comments that we have in mind for the response or is that
Well, you do. I know Ms. Prash is not ready. That's why I decided that we would post on that since she's not ready. If you would prefer to at least start later, we could. And we heard some from Mr. Green that.
So I'm about to say that I, between getting ready for the tree hearing and wanting to go back and read minutes and make sure that I'm giving thorough comments and taking into account comments made prior. Honestly, I just haven't had time to do that. So that's why I told Kat that I wasn't prepared, for me personally, to give my comments on this tonight.
So I suggest we stick with plan A, which is send, yeah, one of Mark's got mine, I'm a true Muslim. Everybody submit the comments, let in, put the letter together and draft form, and we fill them in. You disagree?
No, that's, that's okay. I'll do that.
Andrew, you've been certainly, again, just because I'm not ready doesn't mean that you're not prepared.
Here's just a quick, kind of bullet point thoughts that I have. One, I think that Mr. Green is correct about the experience and that the applicant noted that in their application and said that it's still effective and that. Because that was conditioned upon the following final report approval of a forty B comprehensive permit application for a hundred and eighty unit rental for a whole awesome project. And that's not what this is. This is a entirely for sale project that I think that, you know, the applicant has said they state they've put it in there because they felt like they needed to. And since they put it in there, since they felt like they need to, I think it would be appropriate for the child to put in our position about that as well. And I think, you know, a key issue is about what is the current state of play about mass DOT? And whether or not the ingress and egress can be completely through. I know that one of the things that triggered the whole prior select, then board selection vote about curb cut on Flag Road was mass DOT's position about route line. So I'd like to get some more clarity about that as that position changed, because that really affects like everything else in my opinion.
Well, not only that, I thought that the DOT had officially ruled you could not ingress or egress from Park Central. I thought that was a done deal, no chance. If you go back and read some of the minutes and some of the things that, 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 like this time, it looks like the characterization was that Mr. De Petri had an informal discussion with DOT. So that, but they didn't necessarily officially say that. So I think that should be clarified as far, as far as what they really did and what they didn't do the last time, right? So I agree that that is certainly
And I'll add to that as well, that, you know, in the what was done prior, you know, the, the letter was sent to the proponent, letting him know that, you know, he needed to work with mass DOT or whoever to come up with another solution. That was part of the reason the board took the position that you took. So, I mean, I, I yeah, just, I'll just say that.
I think that's all I've, all I've got. The other, the other ones I've got are more very detailed and I think maybe those are the two overarching ones that I had.
And I would like one more thing to that, to Andy. During the same time, there was a town meeting warrant article to actually date it. I mean, there, there's been a lot of discussion on the best path on what, what we can and what we can't do, you know, should or shouldn't do with that, whether it's right hand turn only. I mean, I think there's a lot of options that is a much larger discussion than I think we're prepared to add tonight. I think all of these things come into play, absolutely.
And then we have one more, what I think is really overarching, which is the current plan, need to, I believe it's going to use seventeen acres or so for two acres. And it's a hundred acre parcel. So I think it's really important to understand the other eighty-three acres. It's impossible because a lot can be done with thirty-three acres. So it's, I'm not looking at this as one project and done.
Mass Housing, for you did look at it that way, but I don't think we
All right, so we got to start now.
Again, I'm on the same page generally. I mean, I do have my list of things that tracks what I think people are talking about here. And it's useless for all of us to sort of send in the mark together as opposed to a lot of the data at this point. I think we're all concerned about the same, public safety. There's a major one for me and the development in the other parts of the parcel, so traffic access, obvious ones. And it seems to me again, to get the widest possible input from us, from individual citizens, from the boards. Starting point here and also the fact that you have points that were made previously to see if there are those that are still relevant. And then have the best possible letter to Mass Housing and go from there. I think you do that better coordinated, if they sort of chime in independently along the way. I think this is the right track.
But I think part of the discussion does have to take place within these meetings.
Starting from a clear, starting point, the letter, the specific pieces, that.
Chelsea?
I just have one question because it's not clear to me from the application. Is there full access to the site from Blackthorn or is it, is that emergency only?
It doesn't say that at this point.
They say that on
They'd be interested, right?
Site visit, they said they consider it, but the plan shows full access.
So full access for them.
Okay. I, I have my list too, but that was one of my concerns if it was full access. So, thank you.
Linda Perkins, One Tower Road. Our house is right next door to the call, the Saget Platform. There's not a road there. It's a cul-de-sac. The, this comprehensive permit implies there's a road. There, there's no road there. You can walk in and it's woods, it's rocks, there's no road. I'm not quite sure what he's implying, but there's no road. It doesn't say to be built. It says access to Blackthorn.
Jay, I, I think it might be helpful, I think you're hearing some of the comments from us tonight. It might be helpful if, if you could put some thoughts together on what we as a board as far as access. I would be interested. I have questions on that for you as far as access. How extensive our authority is on that before we actually send a letter to Mass Housing?
Can we allow curb cuts or not?
Exactly. Well, exactly. But I, I think he's kind of hearing, I hope that he's hearing that message from us tonight. You know, what can we allow or not allow? I know the question was asked prior council if, you know, the, the non curb cut was defendable. And he said yes. So I just want to make sure that we're still on that same page as we're sending a letter with what this board is, the path we're looking to build.
And there was a lot of conversation around, there's this select board control road access in terms of one way.
And there was a lot of conversation around, there's this select board control roadway access in terms of one-way closing streets, can we do one-way closing? And the clear feedback we got was absolutely yes, uh, and again, just to reconfirm if that's still the case, it would be helpful for us to understand that.
Absolutely.
But I mean, there's a, there's a mix of issues there, um, first of all, anything's appropriate for the letter, so. You don't have to have control or have answers or anything, if there's a concern, don't sleep on it. Put it in the, in the letter, as to issues regarding roadway access, if it's something that the select board would normally control, if if a non-forty B. Project was before, um, the the select board for permission to use a roadway or access it or run. Pipes in it or develop a sidewalk on it. A lot of that authority is going to be subsumed into the ZBA process, that doesn't mean that the select board don't. Doesn't influence that process, but to the extent there's a a local approval process. Um, for this, that the select board would normally undertake. That is going to be the authority of the the zoning board, uh, going forward, again, I was the zoning board, I'd look for the comments from the select board. Because they're the ones that would normally do that and they would offer commentary on that.
Yeah, I have, Marty, looking at choices, but again, speaking as a resident, um, so as I see Mr. Tullerman is here. I know we're putting the horse before the horse right, uh, the car right now, but I guess my question is, I understand Mr. Tullerman did represent. Um, the zoning board and I understand that's a town plan, but I think as a resident is speaking about the transparency of the of the the worry and the concern of the residents. Um, as he represented the ZBA against residents who filed the appeal. Um, I would ask the board to ask if there's any conflict, should this come to the zoning board? That Mr. Tullerman is our lawyer that we are, um, having to support the town. This is not a question to be answered, it's just a consideration for you.
Yeah, there there's no conflict here, so.
It's a perception of conflict by the residents and that's what I'm expressing.
Yeah, no, I mean, there there isn't, so, I mean, I wouldn't even say it arises to an appearance of an impropriety. Um, I had a brief, um, uh, representation during the course of litigation, but we were taking a non-active role in that litigation. In any, in any event, um, so I, it was just towards the end. During the argument, during the course of the change of council. Um, so our, my role was limited to begin with, I never sat on or anything, but even if I had. Uh, given advice to the zoning board, which I didn't do ever. In the course of the prior project, it still wouldn't be a conflict, but I didn't, so. At this project, in in many respects, is even though I have some knowledge. Of what the prior project was, this is fresh for me as well.
Okay, anything else? So that love, we go there, that's what. So anybody. So Mr. Green, um, we've got lots to still do tonight, you can call for another minute.
Understood, I I heard a lot about traffic, I I would also, uh, express my concern to the board to look into. The offsets, um, of these buildings. Um, he's proposing five-story buildings next to one and two-story buildings within, I believe it's between a hundred and a hundred and twenty feet. Um, which pretty much blocks out the sun, so, um, I would, uh, ask that the board and, uh, Mr. Tullman look into. How we can, uh, manage that, I just don't think that this is a plan that's appropriate, um, you know, for those residents. And I I think it's also, you know, a a way of Mr. De Petri trying to get back at, you know, the citizens for, uh, not allowing the the previous project. Um, a- another concern that that did come up is, um, I know that you have purview over the ZBA. The ZB, ZBA chair is, uh, Mr. Nicholson, um, he did attend or at least was on the, on the list to attend. Uh, the meeting with mass housing, he is in a butter, um, he should also be accusing himself from any participation, thank you.
Excuse me?
Mr. Williams is the chair.
Okay, uh, so next item is to your support. Um, so two, um. Yes, everybody knows John Butler's month is in the middle of what you get, I will be really dive into such as connect with the. Once he has said that he will be ready to come in front of us on September twentieth, so it's going to be fast, so I told him. Um, second, um, you probably read in the blog et cetera that it's. Destroy the society of South Road, um, it is sold a document for, um, two hundred dollars or so. And they intend to use that money to possibly. Buy and or renovate Facebook mall. And that's how we know that you've seen nothing, but you've seen no document, um, however. It's important because if you go, but if you go look at the PNS that was signed where we sell Facebook mall. Um, there's a writer to it that basically gives South Row a right of first refusal if the buyer were to want to sell a property. Um, it doesn't talk about the property doing, which I guess is on the table right now, but it's totally sorry, so we haven't seen any yet, so I'm just letting everybody know that it's our first refusal, we'll have to do it. If this transaction comes to fruition. So that is my chair support. Um, I think it's Chelsea.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, um, let everyone know that, um. Scott Deverole was promoted to, um, lieutenant a few weeks ago, um, he took Captain Sodowsky's position on the fire department, so I just wanted to congratulate him. Um, and on his new leadership role, and it was a nice ceremony that, um, Mr. Starvers and I attended, thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Purple.
Um, Chair, uh, just a quick update, uh, we, um, are moving forward on the process to, uh, uh, to select next police chief. Today, uh, we held a, uh, assessment center, um, for the candidates, and it went through a variety of. Uh, exercises including center of response, um, a community meeting, problem solving, uh, for employee issues. Uh, we also have some homework and, um, following up now in the next several weeks, unfortunately, they just scheduled some time, uh, to conduct public interviews. And, um, and then hopefully this is something that, you know, can be, um, wrapped up by the board, you know, within the next thirty days. So, um, we'll continue that forward.
Okay, consistent agenda, we've got A through I, so I'm just going to ask anyone if you have anything to add that you want to pull.
Any.
Today?
A.
Eight minutes, ten. Andrew.
Um, I also, uh, have A and I.
I've got C, who's it? Chelsea? So so far.
I think it is.
Nothing more, nothing more for you?
Correct.
Okay. Next.
Seven, seven, I have no comment. Um, I think I did. Yeah, I'm just. Seven.
What, Chelsea, did you have any comments on seven, seven?
I didn't.
Okay, should I go with seven? Well. Um. Seven, twelve, uh, lines one seventy-seven, one eighty-one, one eighty-three, and one eighty-seven, Sanofi is missed, so it's a, so that's somewhere. Line one seventy-nine, uh, we got an estimate, not a quote. Line two oh four, posted is not super script. And warrant versus article is line two oh four. And line twenty-two twelve, it's right, the word issue. And line two sixty-two, Mr. Sidewich, not Mrs. Sidewich.
It keeps happening.
I I I know she's in charge, but. That's it for me.
Yeah, I just had a spelling. Mistake on line fifty-four, it says ahawk, should be ad-hawk.
Okay. Anything else?
Chelsea, did you have any?
I didn't.
Okay, so, welcome back and do the rest.
I had nothing for seven, two.
So we got all three, you know, so, okay, so we simply make a motion to remove all three sets of these errors.
So moved.
Second.
No call, Bob, Chelsea.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi. Sam.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi. Just to direct July twelve, just to check July twelve was in the limits of that. Yeah.
That's okay. Okay, next one, they got pulled the C with I pulled, um, so I'm trying to make this quick and, um, Chelsea. Okay, so, um. This is not going to be funded by the budget for building progress, it's going to be funded, um, by the. We won't need account for your inspection fees, I think, um, if you go back to this, our last town meeting, we have, remember we've got the warrant article that approves how much money can come out of each of the ten volume funds? So we've got a hundred thousand dollars being approved to come out of that revolving fund of just for year twenty-three. But we already spent about ninety-three thousand of that with what we already spent it on, which is part-time inspectors that we already use, et cetera. So we're probably going to have to do what we did this past time for the record volume funds, which is increase what comes out of. We get to tell me next March, and I talked about increase, so I just want to make sure that you, because the memo says it's coming out of the budget, it's not coming out of the budget. Um, it's coming out, but this year, and next year, we may put it in the budget, and we can decide it, but for fiscal year twenty-three, we're going to have to form one way of a volume fund to pay for, so it's going to be clear, otherwise I'm fine. All right, and so, um. Hold on for a second, now let's go to Amy Hill, I.
Yes, it's really just a kind of a typo thing, but it's important, um, from paragraph two. It says S H L, I'm sorry, S H S. Now itself, transfer or convey the flag, any person, the flag should, where flag should be.
Where is it then?
Um, paragraph two.
Okay.
The word flag, because it's a defined term, it should be capitalized. I know it's already been signed, but we could just. Hand handwriting, correct it to the capital F, flag. Um, and just initial it. And, you know, it is important that this document will not be. Sold or transferred or conveyed. So that's why, yeah, I wanted to highlight that.
Can I add just one thing to that, I think, um. Um, I just want to, um, obviously this was a CPC article, so I just wanted to give, uh, thanks to CPC for the hard work they did to make sure. That the memo you was put on this, that it was part of the agreement, so, uh, thank you to CPC for doing a good job.
Okay, so let's do this right, um, let's approve this one now, um, let's approve I as corrected, um, as far as capitalizing the F flag, so that first.
So moved.
Second.
All right, no call, Chelsea.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Cookies, I supply zero. All right, next, um, this is put back in the building vector to the consent agenda, and let's now approve B, C, D, E, F, and G. Today, sorry. Sorry, okay, B through.
So moved.
Okay, second, okay, no call, Chelsea.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi. Sam.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Cookies, I, so the city. Okay, down to other matters, um.
She's here, and Sarah was here, but it looks like she's gone.
Okay, so why don't we bring Ms. Jusiski over?
Hey, Dorian.
Hey Cathy, hey everybody. Sorry about the hot, I was in the rain tonight.
Is Sarah coming back, Dorian?
Yeah, she keeps getting kicked out, so she's trying to get back on again now.
And as if you see her, we box her over, sorry.
Okay, so to tee this one off, um, Shoxey, of which Ms. Jusiski is chair, is asking that we approve eighty-five hundred dollars from ARPA funds. To do more things that they need some money for, um, so they've been asking for this to go on for quite a while. ARPA did, the ARPA committee did consider this and rejected it because I believe they thought it sounded more like a, um, recurring item instead of a one-shot item. Um, Dorian, then in response to that, um, wrote a letter to the Secretary of the Transportation that explains in more detail what they want to use the money for. So that's kind of, that's the background as to what she was asking for those, right, so, um, Lisa.
So, um, I I'm in support of this, I I. I hesitate, I I don't necessarily believe that it is a administrative position that we need to actually be a part-time person for. I think we take the opportunity, we have the ARPA funds to fund this for a year, I think there's a lot of things going on. With the MTA communities, with, um, you know, the plans that we've done, the housing plan, the strategic plan, so. For me, it's an investment in trying to move forward our goal of, you know, of not just affordable housing, but diversity in housing. And I think for me, that's a key, um, we kind of talked about this a little bit with the, the, about this mass housing. That, um, just because you think of affordable in South Row, it's, the bar is separately high based on the median income, so. I'm really interested in Shoxey becoming involved in, you know, not just affordable, but finding a way that some of these seniors. That are being outpriced from their homes, or a young mother that's looking to come to town to benefit from the wonderfulness of what South Row is and what South Row has to offer. So, um, I'm certainly interested in, there's grants out there, my boss B from Mass Housing said that, there there's opportunities out there. And I think they need a staff person to do this, I think there are, Shoxey's made up of people from other boards as well, Jesse Stein. Andrew and, um, Alex Fresh, they're all elected, so they have a lot of other things going on as well, and I think. It's an investment in trying to move forward a housing plan, uh, that I think covers a lot of the bases we need, so I view this as an investment in. And and seeing if we find at the end that we need more than this, then I I'd be supportive of having a conversation, but I think. There's a lot of important things on the table, especially with MTA communities, it's going to have to work very closely with planning board. And, um, if we don't get something done within a year, we're going to lose friends, so. That's my two cents, I think it's a great investment.
Chelsea.
I have a process question, do we have a mechanism to pay for this? Not funding source, but, um, actual payment? Or is this something we're going to have to go through personnel, I think that's the mark that asks the question.
It could be a contract employee, not even an employee, but a a contractor, similar to someone that might be managing a grant. Or something along those lines. Right, or something.
Do this remotely?
I'm sorry?
Will she continue to do this work remotely?
Will she continue to do this work remotely, Dorian, you know, more specifically what you're looking for?
Um, yes, and when we need her for, you know, to come to South Row or to go to a meeting in the state somewhere for housing, she would be able to do that as well.
Is she Sarah, is that what I'm missing here? Okay, that wasn't clear, okay, um, so you identified the person, it's Sarah, who's got a lot of experience, um, with planning, et cetera.
Maybe, but she was instrumental in the housing plan.
Is she just totally on the payroll right now?
Yeah.
Chelsea, does that answer your question?
No, I don't, I don't, my question, unless I didn't hear the answer, sorry.
Unless I misunderstood what you were saying, Chelsea, sorry.
There are a number of things that determine whether someone is a contractor or a part-time employee, I think we would just have to have a conversation with Sarah and find out. Is the community going to control, you know, the hours, you know, that she would be required to work, she would be onsite or offsite? Is she using town equipment, um, things of that nature, so I think we just need to get a little bit more information to see if it's a true contractor.
Or we can organize it so it is a contractor.
True, yeah.
You can, you can set the parameters so that you.
Anytime of those, you can definitely, definitely contract, if that's what you want.
Yeah.
So is that what you're asking, Chelsea, whether she's going to be?
It is, yeah, yeah, it is. It is, yeah. Yeah, it is, because I would, yeah, I just want to make sure that if we prove this, that she can get going. I think it makes a lot of sense for continuity purposes, given what Sarah's done for us already. So, thank you.
Sam.
Yeah, I guess I was confused by the letter, as a matter of fact, and so I strongly support the concept, as Lisa suggests, and I think Sarah is extraordinarily capable, so anything we can involve her in is great. But it wasn't clear to me, is this driven by a specific work plan, Dorian? It says, it sounds like you've got fifteen thousand for a grant now, and so you want eighty-five hundred more, so you've got some sort of a project plan that involves, you know, X hours, X Y dollars an hour, and that totals twenty-four grand here. Is that kind of plan in place?
So Sam, what we used the fifteen thousand dollars for was the five-year strategic plan, where we hired a company to come in, look at our house and production plan, and we came up with a five-year strategic plan. That needs to be monitored, that need, we're going to need assistance in implementing that five-year strategic plan. And we're also going to need a continued implementation of our house and production plan. As you know, the state mandates wants everyone to have ten percent of housing in town, and South Grove is at eight point six percent. So we need to continue working towards our ten percent goal, and we do.
Is Sarah being paid now?
No.
No.
She's doing, she's doing as a volunteer?
She's not really doing anything now. They've started doing their meetings, taking their own minutes. They're doing all that stuff.
So the, thanks, Dorian. The thing I was confused by, I thought from your letter that you already had fifteen thousand to pay for this, and this was eighty-five hundred more.
No, that was, we, we got a grant, we got a grant to put together the five-year strategic plan in order to get the housing production plan moving along.
That, I put you distant, so I got that now, so I didn't understand that. So I support this then, because I think it's important to continue. I think Sarah is a great resource. Good thing to do, so I support. Thanks.
Andrew.
Yes, I also support it, and as you know, I'm the newest member of Shoxey.
Vote against it with your own.
But I think that, you know, this one is a little unusual, and I think what we're really doing is we're encumbering this line, right? We're not actually spending it yet. There'll be a contract and then invoices that come in.
I'm going to go to our spreadsheet, it's on our one drive, and we're going to put eighty-five hundred dollars, we'll be putting it on time.
Okay.
It won't get spent.
And then what is our, do you know, I'm sorry, ask you off the top of your head, off that spreadsheet, what's left after our kind of running tally? I can take, subtract any.
Almost two million dollars.
Okay.
Two million.
But remember the big ones left. There's seven hundred thousand for sidewalks, three hundred for IT, three hundred for the combat pay for COVID, so there's big chunks that are left that are.
We had a hundred and five that was not allocated.
Be careful of that, that's why. And the reason you got a hundred and five is because what we do is the senior center by fifty, I don't know, that's going to end up in the lottery, right? And then the fifty from the municipal grants, so that's where that hundred and seventy, right? They, they, they didn't spend seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, so.
Million parts, sorry.
So we don't know what we're going to trade. That maybe truly does, you know, money that was not recognized, we can.
I think we need to stop giving that away. That's our, that's our cushion in case we overestimate something. So let's stop promising.
Seven hundred dollars?
No, you just, no, whatever number you said before that, Sam, a hundred and five.
A hundred thousand, seven three seven.
The real number is seven hundred dollars, actually, so I do believe that.
Okay, we hear you, Chelsea. Okay, so the only reason we have, it sounds to me like they need money. Well, for not just one shot, and so I was sympathetic to listen to, they need a budget, so we can bring that later, it's not there right now, so I'm happy to. Okay, so we'll make a motion to allocate eighty-five hundred dollars of the ARPA money to Shoxey to do what's described in this letter.
So moved. Second.
We'll call vote Chelsea.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Cook is at five zero. So Dorian, you got your eighty-five hundred dollars.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, everyone.
Probably the hardest you could work for eighty-five hundred dollars, right?
I'll get, I'll get her, let her know. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Night.
Okay, so the next one is the official approval of our fiscal year twenty-three goals that are on the spreadsheet that we now have on one drive that we can access. So I think we're done. Anyone have any other? Problems, changes, as far as what is in your packet? Because that should be it.
We have.
So I.
We're going to talk about the process, we're just making sure the spreadsheet's right, right? Okay, go ahead, Chelsea.
So are we talking about the goals?
We're talking about those, yeah. So we're talking about whether the spreadsheet's correct first.
Oh, the spreadsheet, yeah. It's correct. My, my goals are updated, yeah.
What did you say, Chelsea?
I'm sorry, are you asking me if my goals are right based on what I suggested I wanted?
Yes, we're asking everybody if their spreadsheet, sorry, is their concern is correct.
Yes.
So they're just where they wanted to be, yeah. Okay, all right, so this part is there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, second, the hard part is, okay, what's the next step? So we agree, so we've got a, you've got a liaison from the town assigned to each one of those, I believe, right? So you know who you're working with as far as the town side goes, right? So that's done.
Yes.
Then, so it's up to the individual person whose initials are there, one or two people, to then decide how to basically receive them for goal. It's, it's an individual decision. If you remember, what Pete gave us was that sort of spreadsheet thing where you're going to put this on one drive where you can actually track what you're doing, right, as far as it goes. So it really is up to each individual person now to pursue the goals that they have put there. Name them.
So unless the board has an objection, what I was going to do to try to facilitate this is to begin sending out emails to the board member and the staff member with the goals that you've been assigned, along with a copy of the goal sheet, you know, for the action item that needs the play, action plan that needs to be developed for each one. Just to kind of facilitate the conversation, the start of the conversation. After that, the board, respective board member can take it up with their respective staff members or staff member, you know, to begin to put that plan together. Want to do your every turn of your own, that's fine, but I'm happy to facilitate discussion if that's what you like.
So sorry, sorry, can we back up for a second? Um, so I have a concern that we're not going to get anything done this way with, I think four out of my six goals I'm sharing with someone, and I just, we have, I don't even remember, forty-something goals on this list, and I just think that we're not being very efficient by this, like for, for example, one of them, and I don't care who does it, but one of them is on the tree, the amount of tree funding, like just because Lisa and I were interested in it, I don't think we both need to do that. So I.
Yeah, that was easy, Chelsea. I'm good. Take my name off. I'm good.
She's sorry about that, Chelsea.
Thank you.
I'm just.
Any other suggestions?
Please. So, I mean, I signed up for the ones that I was definitely interested in, but also was open to doing ones that nobody signed up for, so that's why I didn't overcommit to my initial list. I just, you know, with regional dispatch, I've been working on that for, on my own for eighteen months. Nobody else wanted to do it. I was happy to do it. I just think I can handle that one the rest of the way. I mean, I, I just, I, I don't see why we have to share a lot of these.
I want to do that one also, because I am really, really interested in that. So I, I think once I really have intention and have a reasonable, I don't have a problem with people sharing, especially with something really big.
Yeah, I don't either, actually.
I mean, we all have to make the decision, right, on regional dispatch? That's not going to be me in a silo. I just mean, I, I've built relationships with the people involved and have attended all the meetings. I guess I, I just, the report is done, it's going to come back for board discussion. I just, I guess I'm just not understanding, like, you know, I, I, I don't see the need to share all of these goals. I just, I just think it's very inefficient. I think all of our schedules are different. I think, you know, if there's just a lot of work to be done here. I, I don't see why we have to share a lot of them.
The individuals, I mean, and again, I'm happy to share, Lisa and I are a couple of things that I think we both care a lot about, and if, if each of us is willing to spend the time to do it, I think you actually tend to get a better product if you've got broader representation here, so.
And I think some of those, Sam, probably makes sense. I think the one of regional dispatch does not make sense. I'm, I, I don't think that's something that I've been working on for eighteen months, for the last three months, that it needs, needs to have somebody else involved, especially where it's going to come back for a select board vote.
Well, I still want to be involved in it, I'm sorry. It tells me you've done a lot of work, so I will have to catch up, but I still want to be involved in it.
But Kathy, you don't, but Kathy, you're missing meetings with me that we have scheduled just for setting the agenda. So I, I just, you know, we were very critical of my time management skills at the beginning of this fiscal year, and so I'm, I'm being honest, like, believe me.
I take it far, but I still want to be involved in that one.
Well, you're going to be involved. You're going to make a decision at the end of the day. I, I just, I don't see the need for you to be involved in this goal.
And I hear you, and I really do want to be involved in this goal too, so.
Okay, so let's talk about the finance ones. So I'm the finance liaison. Do you want, you want to take a position on who should be the finance liaison?
No, I definitely want to do those.
So you have, you and I are assigned to two out of the five finance ones. I, I just don't think, I don't think we all have enough time to do all of these. That's my point.
Well, I think ones that I think I do have time for that I really want to do.
Kathy, you're missing me to be specific.
Do the backend software, and I'll do the five-year plan, because I've been working on that for years and years and years. That'd be fine.
That's fine. I don't ca, I don't care. I'm just, the regional one, I want. I could care, I'm happy.
But I want to, I want to do it too.
But Kathy, my point is that you're leaving me out of meetings. And so I don't think it's fair for you to take over a goal that I've been working hard on for the last eighteen months, that you're potentially going to have meetings without me.
I'll see, we can talk about this one offline. I'm not going to, I don't plan on leaving you out of meetings for the staff, you've done the work on this one, I need to come up, so I think your concern is probably not appropriate that everything's going to be fine, but I do want to stay on that one.
It's offline.
Right, anybody else that were probably, anytime, any others that have two on there? Which I don't think that there are any.
Very number of.
No, just seems to be on me.
What's that?
I think it's most, most, four out of six of mine, I'm sharing with somebody. That's what my issue is. I don't have time to coordinate schedules.
I'll give you four point four two. I'll take me out of that one.
No, I don't want that one.
Terrible.
We're going to get.
You can have that one.
All right, I try.
I, I just want to make sure, we're being ambitious with the amount of goals. I just think we need to be smart about how we're dividing them up.
We all agree that we want to be smart here. So three one, three two, Chelsea, which one do you want of those two?
It doesn't matter to me. I'm happy to take either.
All right, I'll take three one, because I really have one hundred and fifty.
I'll do three two.
Give us all, okay, so there. Okay, anybody else want to take themselves off of anything that is a duplicate?
You're an ADA, which, that's fine, just.
Yeah, but if, if you have a strong opinion on that one, Sam, I'm, I'm fine to take my name off, you, you know, I.
I also don't want to do it.
Okay, that's perfect. That's fine, and I know.
You guys are going to stay on that one.
Yeah, and fall time meeting, Andrew, I think that's great that we're going to work together. I've been advocating for that one since I got on the boards, I'm happy to. Any, any way to advance that.
Just to that point, because there's a, this is getting into the next agenda, there's, there's a blank space on the warrant.
Yeah.
For that, is the idea that between now and the next meeting, we would.
We're going to talk about that next, as far as what we really want to see in the warrant.
Okay.
So, that's what I'm just trying to have, and then what are you thinking of the portal?
I think open space and trails.
Yeah.
That's fine.
It's fine too.
And survey of employees, Andrew, I think that's, that's fine for the two of us.
And also, I think that MTC could be a resource there, you know, the.
Absolutely, absolutely. I just want to make sure that it happens, because I think it's very, very important. You know, the employees feel heard and, you know, that they have a voice as well.
So also.
Can I make a process comment?
Absolutely.
We've got thirteen minutes.
I know, I know.
Sorry.
So that's spreadsheet set. Okay, Mark is going to, every reason Mark will be basically sent out the email, right? And then it really is up to everyone to pursue their goals, and we will be, again, this and two, basically, keep track of this. Pete suggested that we basically, he said, put it on the website as far as goals go and our partners, et cetera.
We put your action plans down, we will put all of that up on the website, all of your goals, all the action plans, so that, you know, everyone can see what you signed up for and, you know, what your plans are to do them, and then as we go along, and there are updates that, you know, significant updates, we have to those now, we can, we can update those.
On the website, yeah.
But I guess that, that was my, my point, I guess, in the sense that I think providing some structure around that, saying that the next step is for the individuals or pairs to come up with an action plan by X date, and that includes things like action steps, key resources required, milestones that you envision for that. Clearly, you're not going to know much about the future on those things, but to begin to start to light that out, what it needs, that gives us a collective view of the fact that, look, we've got, you know, twenty-eight groups who all need a hundred percent of Vanessa's time, for example, or whatever, so you begin to understand.
I'm fine with that.
Bottom line, that's okay, good.
So shame, look at it.
So anyways. Some date that says, here's what we need. So Mark, you might think about that and suggest a structure.
Look, is, is, is we talking about?
You're very good at that, so you, maybe you've worked with Mark as far as making sure that we really do.
But we, yeah, we talked about that in the goal-setting meeting too, is that there are some that your action plan is going to be one item. Yeah. It's that type of thing, but others are going to need more structure.
And some you just don't know at this point, so, but you, again, people need to think about it, lay out what they can at this point, let's see what looks.
Vanessa's working on one of mine, so I'm like psyched. Yeah.
I think she's already done that. Okay.
Four hours. Everybody happy with that, that one?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we want to take a vote to approve the final spreadsheet? Just to make sure we agree with this final spreadsheet?
Are you including four point two in that, or are you, because you're having that conversation offline?
I think we're going to.
Okay.
So do you want to vote? Everyone's want to say we know we want it.
I don't think we're involved.
All right, I don't need it. Okay, next one, last one is, not true, discussion of the warrant for the after-referenced T's that are coming, if we should have any second questions on this.
So let me, so let me just, let me grab this real quick and try and frame it. So if you remember, we had a conversation at a previous meeting about things that people might want more, things we need to think about putting in the warrant. And everything you gave me, everything we spitball that night ended up as a placeholder, okay? It was the negotiated agreement for the, for articles one and two. We talked about, you know, and then the, and then, you know, funding to address the tree issue should probably be the third article, the kind of dovetail with, with all of that. And then there were other articles, and people brought up things that I think make a lot of sense. The question is, do they make sense for this meeting? Do we have time to put something together realistically in thirty days? And that's really what I think we should look at, and I, I feel bad, I feel bad that we, that we let Ms. Chisinski go, because there were, you know, she'd asked for a couple of, yeah, no, she's not.
My suggestion was going to be Andrew's on Shoxey now. Andrew could get up to date on what Shoxey's.
We'd ask for a couple, she'd ask for a couple of placeholders. I don't know what they're for. Okay, I think that the placeholder originally dealt with the transfer of.
It happened.
And then, that's also, so that's a third one.
But there's others, I think they're working for Andrew that I think is good.
Okay.
The board's going to have to discuss it.
So let's run through these real quick, and check out the ones we create, they're there, they're not good, you know, we got up here, so you can start.
Sure, I, well, you know, so the first, again, the first two, you know, were negotiated items that were left off the annual planning board. One was the tree projection bylaw, second one was the scenic roads. Uh, one was the tree projection bylaw, second one was the scenic roads.
Yeah.
Um, the third article was a separate article dealing with the sum of money for the purpose of addressing the public shade trees need to be removed to ensure public safety. Um, I first warned again, we can, we can work on that, but that's that funding article to catch up, um, for the tree removal. Uh, article four would be to fund, um, any collective warranty agreements we have already, as you know, we saw a fire on the table. And fully committed that that's gonna be, uh, come forward. Article five, I put in a capital article. Because there was a couple of items that we had, that, that the board had thrown out, one was clickers that the town clerk had talked about. Um, another one was, um, this infamous national grid park.
The twenty-one he's done.
That we've talked about.
I think there's problems with town meeting at that one.
Yeah.
Are you gonna stick with that one, Sam?
Do you want to what?
Are you really gonna, I have a question, you have that one on there?
Um, I would like to keep it moving, I guess, if we need, uh, it seems as if we have been talking to the national group about it.
I agree.
Okay, so will we, what if we, you know, we're not saying, nobody's saying no.
Try to do something, so that we might find out that for whatever reason it's not, that's capital.
I'm just trying to keep money off this.
Yeah.
Uh, so, I don't think anyone's saying no, um, but I just don't think this is the right.
We're not gonna be ready to spend money for it.
That's what I'm trying to say too, so can we take it off for this one?
Yeah. As long as we, so, again, and I, and I've not, um, this already, this already was on our, I'm not sure where we are in terms of. Clickers, and I'm not sure if capital has anything else we may need. We are getting the RFP out for the paid management plan. Um, that may be something we need to fund it, but again, I'll know more in three weeks.
Okay.
Um, and hopefully have a better idea when we meet for that.
So you guys still have the clickers?
I will.
Alright.
Uh, article six.
Sorry, can we go back to the clicker, for the clickers? I think if we are gonna put funding source or funding for this on. This warrant, we probably need an article for us to be able to utilize them prior to the capital article. Because if town meeting doesn't vote to want to use them, I don't know if that's what, if that's what the process will be, but if town meeting doesn't vote that they want to use them, then we shouldn't fund them.
I thought Mr. Savino, if it happens to maybe he, um, wanted that to happen, and he wanted to see that the town wanted them before he was going to reduce them. That, I think that was his initial position, but maybe that's changed, I don't know, so.
He wanted, he was a lover. He didn't raise his hand, but I, why I can be more.
He's waiting for it.
What's that?
It said me and the six.
Yeah, but they're, they're home though, they're not sitting here, so you can get extra points for that.
Hey, Paul.
Hey there, how are you? Having fun.
So tell us, Braden's staying with clickers.
Like, you know what, I have to, I have to be a million percent honest with you. And I know I made this, uh, point before with you guys, the, the audio for everybody who's not on. A remote connection is terrible. Like, I can't hear any of you at the table. I hear Chelsea great, I hear everybody else who comes across, like the, the, you know, the, the citizens who, uh, have made points earlier today. But Kathy, I gotta ask you to shout, unfortunately. That's even worse.
Okay, is this any better?
It's a little bit better, I'll, I'll do my best.
What is your position on clickers?
Uh, look, I've, I've, I've had this discussion with the clerk. Um, I'm, I am, um, generally not in favor. I'm in favor, uh, for very specific, uh, circumstances that will truly save us time. Um, and I believe the clerk and I, and I don't know if he's on, but I believe we are on the same page at this point. Uh, we've sort of both come to the middle of where we started on this back in the spring. You know, so, so, um, the article, well, and I should be very clear about one more thing. I will not support their use without an approved article at town meeting. So, so town meeting has to agree on those circumstances that I just mentioned, whatever the case may be. I intend to collaborate closely with whoever is drafting that article, uh, so that I can support it. When the time comes. Uh, so when you say, Mark, when you ask me my position on it, it depends. It depends on the specific circumstances, uh, in which we are going to try to deploy them.
Okay.
But it sounds like we need an article.
Alright, so we, we hear you, that's clear.
Or we could have a funny article intentioned on the first vote, to be able to use it.
Well, I think, I think to, to Chelsea's point, you put the approval article before the capital article.
Right, exactly.
Right, yeah.
Okay, and then you just would.
But it cannot be the first article.
Right.
Alright, yeah.
Would you say it needs to be the first article?
Nope, it cannot be.
Okay, alright, everybody agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Paul.
Okay.
And hang around for much of it, that's what we needed.
Next article, uh, placeholder for CPC projects, I'm not aware that there's anything, um, I, I, I think that could come off.
Okay.
Um, article seven, we've talked about a bylaw to qualify, uh, a fall special town meeting.
Who has that one?
Um, I think Lisa and I.
Yep, Andrew and I, yeah.
So what do you guys think about having time to be ready by?
At this point, all I can think about is, uh, in the time, there shall be a.
Very simple.
Yeah, I mean, just like there's something in the taco that says that every, you know, every.
You want to set the date to be the second?
Yeah, I mean, one thing to consider is, you know, this time last year. I was feeling a little bit frustrated, Lisa, where you were kind of postponing the special time meeting until it was November first, but I felt like November first actually worked.
Yeah.
Pretty well, um.
As long as there's no money there, because you can't, Paul Savelli does not want it to be November first, this guy said his tax rate, so he would not want November first if he thought. We're gonna add any more money to the budget, so we have to understand that this, you know, it really is not about money.
I think, so I think the bylaw has kind of addressed the parameters of meeting. You know, is, is, they, you know, they're only gonna entertain non-financial articles, are you? There's gonna be some, depending on when you have it, I agree.
I worry about doing that, you never know, you never know, and if you put yourself in a box and something comes up.
Then you don't want to put it too late, so your tax rate setting here doesn't get pushed down the road, and. We're helping the stuff tax bills a week between Christmas and New Year's.
But you could write a bylaw with some flexibility in it.
Yeah.
And I'll give you, I'll play devil's advocate, November first, um, boy, does that push the next budget season back, because they, you're all focused on this. And if we, remember, we're gonna be back to a normal town meeting, you think, you know, it's not, you know, the last Saturday in March, right? And so, that means you get started really late on your radar stuff, and I think it pushes it, so I, I'm not a fan of it.
My only concern that is, is you've got fall sports, and that is one of the reasons why. March town meeting came about, and if we set a fall, I, I would bet that there's gonna be somebody that's gonna make an amendment on town meeting.
So I'm just trying, I'm just damn close to con, so, yeah.
So the whole press, I'm sorry, so the whole question is not, how are we gonna do, what we're gonna do? The question is, is there time to do? Is it time to put something together for the board that the board just want to consider?
You can do something in, in, you know, November if there's no financial articles, or if there's financial articles, you could, you know, do something in October. Or you just leave it up to the discretion of the board, set a time, October and November.
October fifteenth, November?
Correct.
So we think something can be done.
Yeah, sounds like you might. Get that goal checked out.
Alright, next placeholder, increase to the CPA surcharge one percent, three percent.
So, um, can we table that for tonight, and we'll get, this is what we decided, I think as far as, I mean.
It sounds like an annual article to me, but.
My only question is, is CPC gonna talk to about this?
The answer is in part, so Andrew Mills, yes, uh, anybody else? So this, this, this is kind of who I revise, right, um, and that's, so he came and he was very surprised to hear that there was any support for this. Brady goes, he's not asking you to see, but she, she was. So anyway, this table for a moment, I'm worried.
Uh, creating a fund for tree, to replace trees that are removed. Um, we talked a little bit about that tonight, I know there's been some difference of opinions as to how to structure this, whether it should be revolving fund. Whether there's, you know, some mechanisms to direct funds into here.
Chelsea, would you want to work with someone from planning board to come up with a policy to replace trees that are moved?
Did, I took that one, right, on the goals?
Your goals.
That's fine. Sure.
About tonight, working together, and I, 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 I think you could certainly carry that forward.
I mean, I know the preferred, from what I understand, I think from some of the conversation, is that the preferred path is not a revolving fund. However, should the path end up being a revolving fund, that's gonna be multiple articles that need to be done, because you've got to change the bylaw. And then, obviously, um, you know, set up the spending limits on the plan.
Well, just to, just to, to tee that one up, the reason, I don't, first of all, you, you know, I don't like revolving funds, but forget that for a moment, uh. What's gonna go in the revolving fund, little peanut, uh, bees, and so there's not enough money to go in there to do anything with, so I think that's not a great idea. Question is, do we set it up now, but wait until spring to truly fund it, um, and set up again, load, garden this one up with, um, a bunch of money stuff that we can't afford.
What about, Chelsea, why don't you come back to us, and give us your thoughts, I think the planning board, that's a suggestion.
Okay.
I don't know, put the rest of the board things, but.
Yeah.
I would just suggest that, and you can let us know whether you think it's gonna be ready or not.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, next article, bylaws establishing timelines and deadlines for work.
That's Jim?
No, I proposed that actually, two seats down, which I think makes sense to clarify that and avoid a crunch. I think it allows plenty of time for people to do citizen petitions.
I do too, I just think the question is, do we have enough time to put something together?
I don't think that's a lot of writing, yeah.
Is there any time? Okay, so you're gonna work on that, Sam?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Town council.
Alright.
Um, article eleven, something that we had had on a selectmen's agenda, we pulled it off in that grant basement, national grid. The purposes of locating DB charging stations on town property. Um, and we can, right now, we're looking at it for public safety, um, but it may be that we, if we wanted to extend. Uh, putting stations in at library, townhouse, um, I don't think that we'd want to live in the properties. That we would allow that for, we may need to be a little more specific. I can work with Jay specifically on what that language needs to look like.
I think we ought to get that in there, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That makes.
Um, and then we have the article, I think you touched on a little bit, clarification on flow of funds from CPC and Chelsea, Andrew, or four laws of trust fund.
Andrew?
You want me to follow up with, yeah, I think they wanted to make it more permanent, because you had a piece of there.
And we prefer to see that happen outside town meetings, uh, in case.
Once town meeting votes, send the money flows.
Yeah.
Through an automatic basis here.
Yeah.
Which Jay is applying just the way the best can do it.
And I don't think CPC is gonna be supported for that, so, um, I think, Andy, maybe just, just. Get some further clarification from Chelsea to exactly what they're looking for. I mean, it has to be sponsored by us, so if, if you come back and, and I think there's additional conversations that take place, or whatever, then.
Right.
I think that tells us whether it's ready.
Um, article two, um.
Did we forget to do this?
No, we just, we need to replenish it, because we've had several claims and with deductibles, so twenty-five hundred dollars, it goes quickly. So.
We need to get rid of this article, why don't we just run it through insurance? Uh, I don't see why we do this with an R or a D, but I'm fine with it one more time.
Insurance pretty tight, and we don't have a whole lot of.
The insurance, likely insurance is what, six hundred thousand dollars a year, the, the premium, so I still don't see why, so everybody understands what we're doing. The rule of deductible, we do as a warrant, but yet we pay the big premium, and when that, the interest is supposed to be, this is part of insurance, so why don't we just run it through insurance? Anyway.
Well, we can, for, for next fiscal year, if you want, we can, we can up that and.
So we need to run this through twenty-three percent, I tend to already put this on that.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, article fourteen, this is something we talked about, um, the clerk had talked about, this that, and who are violating established consistency for how boards and committees operate. Um, and, um, I'll check with him and see whether or not that's something he's actually, um, gonna be bringing forward.
I'm not a huge fan of that myself, I think the concept is useful, but I don't think everybody used it, Mark, to do exactly the same, be there, but.
Probably hard to do too, because everybody's gotta change to get it done.
Yeah, the next, uh, the next two articles were things that the assessor had asked for, um, for, um. Um, converting, upgrading real estate software, and also for, um, uh, creative services for cyclical inspection for those lots of properties. Um, money's coming out of overlay, so there's not gonna be any impact on the tax rate for that. Um, seventeen and eighteen, again, where I wish that Mr. Zesinski had still run us, um, asked for two placeholders for Chelsea, and I'm not really sure what.
I don't know what the second would be.
Mark, did we not know about the, uh, assessors' requests, like for software upgrades, if they're supposed to be done in the fall of twenty-two?
He just asked. These are things that just came in probably within the last three weeks.
So is that something that has to go to capital?
I don't think the first, uh, the second one does, fourteen thousand. Um, twelve five is converting and upgrading existing software, capital ownership, that may be something that is.
Over ten thousand.
So you're suffering, Kevin?
I, I believe so.
I just, I, I just think it's weird that we're being, that we're upgrading something in the fall of twenty-two that we didn't know about.
So you're saying it should have been in the fiscal year or twenty-three budget?
Yeah.
Appreciate software.
That's why, so, you know, in county, in four primary county, you normally wouldn't put software in a county, but.
Well, I'll ask the question.
Well, we may need to get more information on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least it's not gonna affect the tax rates.
So the two Chelsea placeholders, so Andrew, in your conversation, if you can just. I got three placeholders for Chelsea, what do we, um, who are we, who are we, one, or two, or three, or?
Yeah.
Uh, and then the final one was one, um, uh, submitted, um, I think, in stretch to the board of health, uh, funding for public health study. Um, Chelsea, you can speak to this, I think it's, it's a placeholder at this point.
It is, yeah, so, um, we're working at the regional level on kind of a menu of options for different studies related to our regional board of health. And local boards of health, um, and I think Selfbro and maybe Boylston's interested in doing an actual, um, staffing study related to local and regional resources. Um, I am hopeful that we can get a grant to do this, um, staffing study. Um, so this is purely just a placeholder until we, um, figure out what, um, what grant opportunities are, um, are coming up. There was a bill passed, um, last week by the House and Senate, um, for this, and it looks like staffing is included in that bill. Um, so, one of the concerns that we had was, if we didn't put this placeholder and, and didn't get the grant, then we would have to wait another cycle in order to fund this. Um, I don't have a number yet, but, uh, we are working through this, I know Heather's working with the other health directors in our region to figure out, um, the best way to do it. So that's, that's where this is coming from.
There, that is. Okay, so, that's it as far as, so it's not anything. So, we've got to figure out our schedule, we're gonna have to meet before September seventh, we already know about the, um, please, geezer, um, we need to meet tonight. So Chelsea, I'll, we'll talk to you, I'll talk about your schedule, I'm sorry to make sure it works for you, um, but. What I was thinking is, is we're gonna meet tonight, so I'm kind of making a hope, we said this one, maybe on the first night, we pick this back up, right? Because we can't, you know, if we wait to September seventh, we really are gonna be, um.
Yeah.
Two questions, so do this and do the two interviews, right, one that I, the next night, do the voting.
So the seventh, that, that's because, um, we're posting issue with, September seventh, we're meeting on Wednesday or Tuesday.
Well, it's not, it's because elections on the sixth.
Alright, so.
Oh, okay.
Can't hold out the sixth.
And we're gonna sign more. And we're gonna sign a warrant on the twentieth, right? And so we've got to, I don't think waiting seventh to really start getting this truly voted on, and if that person's in the time to answer. So I think we've got to do one more meeting, the fourth seventh, right, to kind of make much more progress, just to start voting on these things, I did, that's right.
You know, back in the day, this one, I used to meet every week, you know, back in the seventies, they do. Yeah, so I'm not gonna complain for a second meeting.
For thirty minutes of meeting.
No, it wasn't, they went, they went till twelve-thirty, one o'clock in the morning, but then they took phone calls during the meetings, and, you know, but it's interesting stuff, but anyway.
Are you gonna do like a history corner section on the strike work meeting?
I can tell you a story.
Okay, so we're gonna have one meeting, or we do two things, so one thing, we're gonna do work on a warrant, and we're going to do two interviews, and the next night, we're going to.
So can I make a suggestion, because I went back and looked at what the board did with the, with Chief Achilles, is they appointed the same, in the same meeting that the interview. So I went back and checked that, so instead of having.
We can still do that, but we decided today that we wanted to be able to sleep on it. Do the interviews, and then, then sleep on, think about it, come back.
So, why don't, why don't we post for two days in a row, and then give us the option to, if we're ready, to make a decision on the first night?
Do that.
Yeah.
What days are we talking about again?
Well, we were talking about the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, am I right?
I think, yeah, just trying, trying to find, I think, if you can, to fourth, third one to be here, so. I think we're just trying to find.
Okay, so twenty-third, we talked about, but Chelsea can't be here physically on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, either it is in the, if we do twenty-third, twenty-fourth. I think what you do next week is pretty late, as far as this goes, so I'd like to get it done, so the later as far as these things goes. So Chelsea, are you not here at all between now and the end of month?
I come back late, so I could do a morning meeting on the twenty-sixth, or I could do the twenty-nine, thirtieth, thirty-first.
But that pushes us too hard against September seventh.
What's the problem with September second?
Seventh, I said, we've gotta get, uh, all of the warrant stuff done by then, so we're not, it's not just the police chief. Or twenty-second, twenty-third.
I mean, I could do, even though.
Somebody's leaving on the twenty-fifth.
I, that's me, what I'm saying is, that's actually my anniversary as well, but I think, I'm, I'm flying out, but let me just verify. I might be able to meet on the evening of the twenty-sixth. Twenty-fifth, I'm sorry, for the evening of the twenty-fifth.
It was Thursday?
Thursday. I think Matt has people coming in to, to maybe do that, so I need to.
In June?
By June, yeah.
Have you had a meet in person?
We're trying to meet in person, so.
But that's only two days, Lisa, that's only two days before, like, what's wrong with the twenty-ninth? That's, that's nine days before our next meeting, is that? I guess I'm not understanding the point.
If we're trying to get as early as possible to close down on some of this warrant article stuff, as well as the chief, yeah, as quickly as possible.
Well, I mean, you still could meet, I don't wanna get a meeting happy, but you still could meet that week of the twenty-second and do other items, you can do warrant article, you could do, you know, that, those type of things and everything, and deserve twenty-nine, thirty to do, you know, to do those one item law. Yeah, it's one item pieces. So I'm not trying to add, I'm not trying to add meetings, I'm just trying to find a path. So, well, if you, if they define the meetings now, then, then they shouldn't be.
So, um, Chelsea, you can't get here on the twenty-second or twenty-third, one of the two?
No, no.
So, you know, one of the advantages of maybe doing it on the twenty-ninth is that, I don't mean to be on vacation from the fifteenth through the twenty-third. If we were gonna meet in the evening on the twenty-third, I think I'd be.
Twenty-fourth, that's how we pick the twenty-third, because you do.
Okay, so I, I, I could do that, it's just for these Shoxie warrant article, if that's actually gonna go forward. I don't know whether you would post the agenda, but I can use the time.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, there's also, again, as Mark said, not getting meeting happy, but, you know, sometimes we've had just meetings at like eight o'clock in the morning, to just do very focused things, so I don't know if it'll be flexible, but just, it has occurred to me that we're gonna try to finalize, we're gonna make another more progress on the twenty-third, in terms of actual language for warrant articles, particularly for Trump and Lisa and I are trying to do the.
Yeah.
Or make fault.
You can consider a morning meeting to work on a warrant, I mean, if it's more of a working session.
Yeah.
Then, than anything else.
So Chelsea, did you do the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth in the morning, or just a warrant?
I can only do the twenty-fourth, because I have a commitment.
So, could we work with Andrew?
I could, I could do the twenty-fourth.
I can do the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth is a date or something?
And.
So we're gonna warrant.
Is that enough time, Andrew, when are you leaving for vacation?
It's the second.
Saturday.
So you leave on Saturday, so we're gonna try to put some language together for the warrant, or for.
We have to vacation.
We have to go.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that's why.
Maybe the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth do. I know we don't wanna wait necessarily that long, but.
No, I think that they do that definitely extra time.
I agree.
So you wanna do twenty-ninth and thirty?
As I think about it, I think that makes more sense.
Okay, so.
Chelsea, you'll be home?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Available all those nights?
Yeah, I think we have open houses, but I think they're done by then, for kids' school.
I think Andrew had said if we did a night meeting on those two, or we keep them relatively short, start at seven, would that be more helpful?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
All right, so twenty-ninth and thirtieth, seven o'clock.
No AM meeting.
What AM?
Um, one other piece of good news, I just got an email from Mr. Sinski, don't need the warrant.
Hey, so, pretty good, so that you're.
So you're off, we saved you some work.
Okay.
So you have time now to work on the other part of the cards.
All right, so twenty-ninth, thirtieth, I forgot, so twenty-ninth and thirtieth, maybe seven o'clock, twenty-third, we're gonna do warrant, and we're going to do the two interviews, and then thirtieth, we want to sign, okay. Okay, agree? Fine.
Yeah.
All right, so, Mr. Gerstein.
Yeah, I just have a process question, how much time is actually required to post on the two weeks?
Seven days. Before it gets posted to two weeks.
Okay.
Because, you know, Mark, you said that, and it's out, so, the, so, just, there's time to get on the twentieth.
Correct.
Uh, for the meeting, the committee is on the thirteenth, so it seems to me like you could potentially push that back ten days.
We don't like to wait for the last minute.
I've gotta go to print.
Yeah, so that's.
Okay, I've got it, there's other administrative pieces to it, August is a horrible month for meetings, we all, um, by having, it, it's in like an artificially, you know, ten days earlier than needs to be. And that also pushes, if this is September seventh, it would have to be.
Just, I can't hear anything that's being said right now, so just.
Okay, so, we all agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, any other public left here?
Yep, four.
But any comments?
Hands up.
Nobody's got, they've all got their hands up?
No, no.
Oh my god, I don't see my hands. Okay, so see, no further public comment, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we'll call the Lisa.
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Hopefully five euros.
Didn't quite make it.
Good night.